Welcome everyone to tonight's school committee meeting. Could I ask, there hopefully is some pledge of allegiance please.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag.
Of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Guys, I just wanted to stay standing for one moment. I'd just like to have us all reflect for a moment on the tragedy that occurred in Canada the other day. We have Mr. Clancy, who came to us from Maine via Canada and is a Canadian citizen. So if we could just have a moment of silence please for the tragedy in Canada. Thank you. All right, we are a little shorthanded. Chuck DeCoste is at an event, a football game that his son is playing in. He will make it here, hopefully in the next hour. Mike Mazzoni is hung up on business. He may be here, he may not be, but we're going to move on without them. So can I get a motion on the consent agenda minutes for October 9th, 2014, ult to bills and payroll?
Make a motion, except consent agenda is read. Second.
Any discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing none. Move the question, all in favor of the consent agenda?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Moving along, interested citizens. Any interested citizens who would like to speak in front of us at this point in the meeting? Seeing none, we will go to recognition. Superintendent Clancy?
We're going to start off this evening with Dr. Harrington presenting National Merit Scholar awards.
Good evening. It's my privilege each year to come before you around this time in the fall and present before you students who are going to be recognized or have been recognized by the National Merit Scholar program. They are recognized as commended students in this program, and it's based on their performance in the PSATs. So I'd like to announce special recognition for seniors Samantha Florrie, Luke Formicella, Zach LaCroix, Ethan Rombacher, Alyssa Taft, who have all been named commended students in this National Merit Scholar program. Commended students throughout the country are recognized for their outstanding performance on the PSATs and their exceptional academic promise. Littleton High School's commended students placed among the top 5% of more than 1.5 million students who took the PSAT. And this is a little quote from the National Merit Scholar spokesperson, "Recognizing academically talented students plays a fundamental role in the advancement of educational excellence within our nation. We hope this recognition will help broaden their educational opportunities and encourage them as they continue their pursuit of academic success." And we can't agree more with that sentiment. So tonight I'd like to recognize these students by having them come up. Superintendent-
Excellent. And we can maybe stand over there, we can shake their hands as they-
Everybody smiles.
Worse than that.
Let's go back the other way, we're going to take a picture somewhere.
Here we go. Three, two, one, 12, 52, hike.
Thank you.
Thank you. On behalf of the school committee, obviously congratulations to all the students that were commended. That was the PSAT, that's sort of the precursor to the SAT, so now obviously the expectation of ourselves and your parents is to keep kicking butt and do well on the SATs and your college applications. And you've already represented Littleton very admirably in this endeavor, so we expect you to keep it up. You know, confident that you guys can do that, you've shown what your capabilities are. And, you know, you guys are typically the kids we like to recognize the most and worry about the least. So, thank you. All right, Superintendent Clancy?
Every year I have the pleasure of giving out an award sponsored by the Massachusetts Superintendents Association for Academic Excellence. This award is awarded to a student based on cumulative averages over three years and a number of other academic factors. And it's a very prestigious award, and they like us to present this award in the fall so that students can use them on their admittance essays or documents that they send to colleges, et cetera. So this year, it's with great pleasure that I present this award to Ethan Rockbacher. Ethan, would you come forward please?
I'd like to thank the students and their families for coming out tonight. You are all welcome to stay as long as you would please. Close and lock the doors so they can't- All right. We have an agenda of presentations. We're going to move a little bit of this around. The turf field committee has a presentation. They are busy out at that eighth grade football game, which is a, they didn't know they were going to play tonight. The, that's been, that schedule's been bouncing around because of weather and everything else. So it was unfortunate, ended up on the same night as this. We also have Russell Street Elementary Standards, but Mr. Bizzitl isn't here yet, so we will hold off on that. So we're going to move right to high school events placement presentation from Dr. Harrington.
I can follow along with my iPad too. Okay. And we have the traditional report now for you of the advanced placement results from May 2014. A lot of the students who took this test, or a series of tests, in May are now in college. Some of their names will be read to you tonight when we recognize the AP Scholars. And we do that by just a reading of the names, and I'll share that with you in just a few minutes. Excellent results to report to you all tonight, excellent results. Just to get started, as a way of review, the AP courses that are currently at LHS are listed here for you. We have, the new addition is the AP French VHS, which is taught by Mrs. Allison. And that course is sort of a hybrid of VHS, but also students present in the class. Students are taking it online. In her class, we have about three, maybe more, no more than five students taking it online with her. But then she's also teaching a number of students. I think at last count it was, it was over 20, it might have been 21 additional students from around the world who are taking her class online. So it's kind of a unique opportunity for students to connect in, you know, different areas where they can chat with each other, not only with the five students among themselves in the class, but also they can, by the virtual method, talk to other students who are taking AP French with Mrs. Allison as their teacher. The subjects where the students took the 2014 AP exams are not always the same courses that we offer. You'll notice at the, at the bottom of this list, number 12 is Japanese Language and Culture. We had a student on his own decide to take that exam, and those, and the results were reported back to us. That's just part of the AP program. You are not required necessarily to take the course to take the exam. You can study it on your own and then still sit for the exam. I think, Alex, you may have want, you may have, if I recall, I think you did that too, for, on your own. Right, okay. The number of students taking the AP exams continues to be a high number for us at LHS. It stayed relatively consistent over the years, and the number of students taking the AP, the number of AP exams was down a little bit from last year, but not, not really in a significant way. It was just based on student interest and things like that. We do expect perhaps, based on enrollment for AP this year, that that number will go up in May of 2015. The next slide, the number and percentage of exams at each AP score level. This is a great number to report to you because we strive for this. We strive to have students score a three or better so that they can, many of them again have their, I guess can get credit is the way to describe it. They can get, substitute their AP experience for, say, a course at college in the freshman year. Not all colleges though do that anymore. Not all of them will exempt a student from, if you take an AP course, they may, even if you take AP Physics or AP English, they may still require you to take the course depending on the college. But in general, a lot of colleges do allow for AP credit at, at the college level. And so students' results are really important, but they have to score three or better. And LHS students did a remarkable job. 93% of our students scored, had an exam, or scored at a three or better. And then this is another stat, it's just another way of looking at the data, the number and percentage of exams at each AP, at each AP score level. And the results include students who took multiple exams, and you can see it all broken down for you. Not a lot of students scoring twos and ones. It does happen, a ton of times, students stretch themselves, and we're okay with that. Students benefit from being in the course, even if it's challenging a little bit of a test for them, a little bit beyond what they're ready for, say as a junior or a senior. But the College Board would, would say, and I think the college professors would attest, that students are better prepared for college level work as a result of having engaged in the curriculum and prepared for a test of this, this rigor. The number, the next slide is the number and percentage of students with one or more scores of three or higher. And this is a great stat. We had 95% of our students at this, at this rate, percentage of AP students with scores of greater than or equal to three. They had at least one, so that's, that's really great. AP Scholars, the criteria is listed there for you in the, on the slides. I just want to take a moment to recognize by reading of the names, as I said I would, the students who are AP Scholars for LHS this year. I'll turn to the next slide, which has a table and tells us, you know, in a sort of chronological fashion, the total of AP Scholars for the last five years. And we've had some outstanding years, and last year was consistent with that, where we had 23 overall AP Scholars. And just to share with the public, about 18% of the 1.9 million students worldwide who took the AP exams performed at a sufficiently high level to earn this distinction. Only 18% of 1.9 million. The College Board recognizes several levels of achievement based on students' AP exams. At Littleton High School, nine students qualified for AP Scholar with Distinction Award. And their names are Brooke Anderson, Valerie Higgins, Andrew McGregor, Julia Patino, Carolyn Provo, Chloe Schelfert, Ally Stea, Sidney Vaca, and Nancy Yang. Seven students qualified for the AP Scholar with Honor Award, and their names are Danielle Conceition, Sean Fisk, Samantha Florrie, Catherine Goodwin, Amy Higgins, Sienna Stea, and Emily Sterns. And seven students qualified for the AP Scholar Award, Brendan Burke, Lauren Gibbons, Mark Marshall, Peter Murphy, Ethan Rombacher, Ruth Tornell, and Joshua Whitcomb. Congratulations to all these LHS Scholars. I'm going to turn now to the next slide. Oh, just some special notes. AP Art History and AP English Literature were not offered in 2013, 14, and that can, we think that contributed, certainly with the English. English is usually fairly highly enrolled. You can get at least a dozen students usually in an AP English class, somewhere, sometimes up to 20. And that would account for, you know, a little bit of our drop in, in the number of students participating in the, in the AP exams. AP Art History is generally a low enrolled course, and we just didn't have the student interest last year. Neither do we have it this year, so it's not being offered. We are offering AP Studio Art, which is a real specialty for kids who are going on to art school. It's a really important course to offer for those kids who are building portfolios for art school. And Mrs. Hossfeld does an excellent job preparing them for that. We had 15 students enrolled, this came up, I think, at our last meeting or a few meetings ago, enrolled in honor statistics, and they took the AP Statistics exam with the encouragement of their instructor, Mrs. Johnston. And we'd like to offer a full-fledged AP Stats course next year. This will require some discussion with superintendent, no doubt, in, in trying to figure out how we can finance this additional offering and how it might affect math sections in the schedule to free up the teacher to teach that course. It'll also require her to go through some professional development. I am, I've met with her already, and we've developed a preliminary proposal to present to the superintendent and, and see how that goes. I know in general, superintendent and the school committee has spoken in favor of this course. It's just a matter of working it out. It shouldn't come at a significant cost though, other than books and some professional development for the teacher. The teacher is already raring to go and excited about it, and she already has a bunch of students ready to take it and groomed for it next year. So just to want to put a plug in for that course. I think it's well worth it. The other course that we intend to offer next year through our partnership with code.org is AP Computer Science. That's built into our agreement with them. We've known about this, and it's just part of, you know, the, the natural sequence or progression of that agreement of going to that next level, AP Computer Science, and that will be taught by Ms. Ogden next year, if there's enough student interest, of course, which we will try to promote. So that's sort of the highlights for where we were this past year and what's ahead. The big highlight perhaps is that, just to note that 95% of our students, the big takeaway, scored at least a three on one AP exam. And that's great news for LHS and a credit to the students, but also to the talent of their teachers. And lastly, the last slide you'll see there is the percentage of total AP students, what I just mentioned. It compares it with Nat, this is data taken directly from the College Board, and I just created this slide in our PowerPoint presentation tonight, to give you a sense of how LHS compares nationally and at the state level. 72% of the AP students within Massachusetts scored a three or better on at least one exam. 61% globally, 95% at LHS. And, you know, that's just outstanding. I'm happy to report that to you tonight. About wraps it up.
Can I answer questions?
I have a couple comments. I'll start with this. It's not, the 95% above three, those aren't just threes. Most of those are actually fours or fives.
You could see that, yeah.
Twice as many fours or fives as, as we have threes, which is great, because as you said, colleges are becoming more selective with APs. They're not always giving credit for-
For just a three.
For APs. And certainly not for just a three. There-
Yeah.
A lot of the schools that our students are applying to only accept or only give credit out for fours or fives. And so this is a great way to, we're hap, we're very happy with threes too, but it's even, it's not just at 93%. It's, it's actually 61% get a four or five, which is pretty incredible. 62%, excuse me. So I think that's fantastic. The, the other thing I would ask, and I think you touched on this a moment ago, is AP English Language offered at LHS?
Not right now.
Okay.
We have a teacher willing and ready, she, ready to teach it somewhat. She just needs to go through an institute in preparation for it. You might recall Mrs. Barry?
Yes.
She's the-
Getting certified.
Teacher that's willing to teach that. We have to think about how mu, how many AP courses we want to offer. And so one of the things we would look to do is potentially have an alternating sequence with the literature and the language-
Mm-hmm.
So that students could, if, for really gifted or, you know, motivated students who are interested in literary, the literary world and humanities studies, they could take, some students might want to take both, both the language and, we certainly had a few graduates last year who were very much geared that way, who would have taken the language and the literature. But, you know, there were less than five of them.
Right, right. So I must, are we, are we currently offering literature and we're just switching-
Just the literature right now. It's been the staple course since the time you were there before. And what we're thinking about doing at some point is introducing the language and composition course in an alternating way. We just have, the English department just has to work, work it out and figure out how they want to sequence it.
Great.
And when they want, when, when the appropriate time to do it.
Great. I misunderstood you, I thought you said that we weren't offering English literature.
No, we offer, we didn't offer English literature last year. It's back in this year with a fairly good enrollment.
Because I do know that's popular, and I agree that it doesn't necessarily make sense to offer both the language and the literature at the same time.
Too small for that. Yeah.
With our, you know, it's too small of a student population for the capacity to run. Although they do complement each other quite well.
No, I just think it's an excellent testament to the students that we have in this district for the effort they apply to their studies.
Mm-hmm.
Obviously the teachers that are-
Yeah.
Obviously the teachers that are supporting that focus there.
Excellent.
Yeah, I'd like to reflect that. I mean, obviously, it's a reflection on the students, but you've talked about for each teacher that wants to teach an AP class is professional development that has to go on, and they make a commitment to do that. And then on top of that, I know that there's work that goes on beyond the traditional school day.
Yes.
In terms of the hours that the teacher is working with the students. And, you know, I think it's a testament to Littleton that we can offer a breadth of offerings that we do and that our students can take advantage of it without the staff being prepared to challenge them. You know, it just, and the fact you talked about how the statistics kids took the AP exam, even though they weren't technically part of an AP curriculum, again speaks to the willingness of the teacher to challenge him or herself to be prepared to teach at that level, so that the kids can at least have an opportunity to do that. Personally, I have no problem seeing ones and twos. If I didn't see any ones and twos, I'd say the test isn't hard enough. This is exactly what AP exams are designed to do, which is to test and push to the highest limit. I also don't worry if we see a sort of a, you know, downtrend in the number of kids taking it, because again, it should be something that somebody thinks about deliberately and asks themselves, is this really appropriate for me? Or is one or two enough and not trying to go for distinctions and honors and things like that? You know, I appreciate the fact that as a district, we support all levels of commitment to this type of thing, and it gives every kid an opportunity to at least get a, you know, an immersion on this. So I think it's great, great results. I just like the framework upon which we seem to be going off on that. And I appreciate the deliberation we take in terms of impact on schedules and, you know, where we have critical mass and where we're going to be able to make good decisions on work, because we can't do everything for everybody, no district can. But I think that this is another reflection of our ability to, with our resources, to really get maximum benefit out of it. So this is always one of my favorite presentations.
Great. Thank you.
Just a couple of comments. And again, as, for me as a superintendent, it's always a pleasure to see the results of what we're doing within our school district and our students and our parental support and our teachers who are committed to continual professional development, that package together results in what you see this evening. And in a school our size, our students also have the benefit of taking part in many other activities. You find in large schools, that is somewhat limited. So if you take that into account in terms of our passion for developing the whole child, our students are very busy, often taking part in one or two extracurriculars a term, and are still managing to spend the time necessary to do well on rigorous curricula. So it's a very proud moment for our district and look forward to continued moments such as this as we move forward. So thank you, Principal Harrington.
You're welcome.
For bringing us the good news this evening.
Happy to do it.
All right, Mr. Bizidlo's here, and we have a presentation on the Russell Street Elementary Standards and Report Cards. Ready?
And Russell Street School for the past number of years have been trying to come to terms with their conversion to standards-based report cards. What this does as a district is allows us to have a K through five continuum for the standards-based approach to assessment, which I'm very strong advocate of, and it certainly does reap benefits in terms of working toward mastery of various goals set within the standards, the Massachusetts standards. So I'm very pleased, and I'm very pleased with the process that was used to collaborate with staff over a period of time. This has been a project that's been going on for more than a year, and they've solidified the process and have come up with a product. And as a superintendent, I'm anxious to see it rolled out. So I'll turn it over to you, both of you.
Thanks. Good evening. We're happy to be here. Mrs. Heidi McGregor, fourth grade teacher from Russell Street School, has been kind enough to come and join us tonight. Heidi was part of the Russell Street School Report Card Committee, who's up on the screen now. And the first thing I'd like to do is thank them for all of their hard work. As the superintendent indicated, this was a great deal of work, months and months of work. The committee met regularly, probably every other week for six, seven months, and the team broke into subcommittees and worked on multiple projects on their own with guidance from the committee itself. And I couldn't be more proud of the product that's been produced, not only in the report card itself, but in some of the supporting documentation. We won't go over all of that tonight, but there's been lots of teacher leadership that's gone into this. So I'd like to thank all of the folks that are noted here, and thank you to Heidi for So as you think about the history of how we got to where we are tonight, the biggest one is there was a lack of consistency and a lack of vertical alignment with the Russell Street School Report Card. And Heidi, I think, can talk about that a little bit, she has a longer institutional history than I do. But when I arrived at Russell Street School, there were three different report cards at three different grades. They didn't look the same. They didn't have vertical consistency in their language. Some of them were completely standards-based, some of them were partially standards-based. Even where they were standards-based, they used letter grades to indicate the standards, which was confusing, I think, to students, staff, and families. So one of the things that faculty said very quickly was, we're concerned about the way we're reporting information. We feel like it's not clear to students and to families, and we'd like to report more detailed information and be able to use the information that we're reporting to drive our instruction differently. So I don't know if you want to talk about sort of that from a teacher perspective.
Okay. Sure. Yeah, you know, when we meet with parents, we want to have something that's actually realistic and it actually gives a good picture of how their child is doing at school. So with our new updated report card that's better aligned to the Common Core that we're using to drive our instruction, what we're able to report to parents is just much more relevant to what the students are actually doing in the classroom.
As I indicated, this was a significant effort that had been undertaken a couple times previously at Russell Street. And because of the grand nature of this project, to try to get folks on board and to get buy-in and to get teachers across vertical grade levels to feel comfortable with the document and to feel like it reported to parents in a way that reflected the work that was being done at Russell Street, knowing that there was a significant shift in reporting, was a pretty significant change. And so we're pleased that we brought it to fruition. And I think to acknowledge that there's nothing that's changing about the instruction at Russell Street School. What we're changing is the way we're reporting student progress to parents. So, you know, there have been changes as we've rolled out new Massachusetts standards that are aligned with the Common Core. Every year we change the way we teach a little bit, we roll out new programs, we, you know, tweak what we do. What we're talking about tonight is simply the way we report and how we tell parents how their children are doing based on the standards that we're required to teach them. So this has nothing to do with a change in pedagogy or in program. So some quick facts that Mrs. McGregor and I can share with you. The first one, when you think about a standards-based report card, and I've talked about it several times at meetings previously, is this report card will let parents know how their students are doing against the expectations required of them by the state versus how they're doing against their peers. And so for some teachers, administrators, and parents, that's a significant shift. So, you know, sometimes in districts, in the past I've heard from parents, well, when my child gets an A, I know that they're doing better than the other peers in their class versus when I hear that they're meeting the standard. You know, is everybody meeting the standard? Are most kids exceeding the standard? And we're in that mindset that we want to know how our children are doing compared to others. And so it is a significant shift in that way. I try to explain to parents that there's quite a bit of subjectivity in an A, depending upon who gives an A. You know, and some folks are, it's much more difficult to get an A, and, you know, there's all those types of things. While there's some subjectivity in standards-based grading, the goal here is to try to be more objective and to help you see how your child is doing against what they're expected to know at a particular grade level. So no system is perfect. There's certainly problems with standards-based grading, but we're trying to give you a clearer picture with what we need to know your child knows and where we're trying to help him or her go by the end of a particular grade level. Anything to add?
And we've also talked a little bit about how we're going to be grading students on trimester benchmarks, which I think will be a little bit easier to swallow for parents as they're digesting their child's progress. Because, for example, in first term, we teach a lot of geometry in fourth grade, so a student can meet the requirements of that standard in first term. But then in second term, we might go to a more advanced topic in geometry, and then we would evaluate them based on what we've taught so far, not the end-of-year standard. So each trimester will have benchmarks.
Yeah, I think that's a great point. One of the things that the Report Card Committee tried to do in researching area districts that have moved to standards-based report cards is get out in front of some of the things that have been challenging. And one of them is just that, in a traditional standards-based report card, you're looking at an end-of-the-year benchmark. And so what's difficult about that is, say you're a brilliant, you know, perfect student, you can't really meet the benchmark till the end of the year because you haven't done the work yet. And so you're progressing, 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 and parents say, well, why give me a report card? You know, and so what we've decided to do, and what many districts have decided to do, is to try to set trimester benchmarks. So you can meet a trimester benchmark, so there's some meaningful data for parents to understand, excuse me, that my child is where they should be at this time of year. What that means is you could meet a fall trimester benchmark and then not meet the winter one hypothetically. Another thing that we did is we did put an exceeds the benchmark indicator, as you'll see when we get further in the presentation. There's some argument that standards-based report cards, especially at older grade levels, should only go to meets, because if you tell a student they exceed a benchmark, they sort of park and they don't keep going. You know, and if you tell a student they meet, they're often likely to keep trying hard and moving out vertically. So we did go and put exceeds on the report card based on some of the feedback that folks received in neighboring districts that have rolled this out and found that parents appreciated the exceeds the benchmark. So after much dialogue in our committee meetings, those are a couple of things that we put in place based on feedback we had gotten from others. So that's a great point. I mentioned vertical cohesiveness. I think you'll see when you look at these documents, they're in your packets, they're very vertically cohesive, they look the same, they're based on the same set of learner characteristics, characteristics of a learner, excuse me. They're based on the same standards in science, social studies, and special subjects, and they're based on the same anchor standards and math content standards. And so as your child progresses to Russell Street School, the report card will look very similar to you. You'll know what to expect. This is a major commitment. It was a major commitment for the Report Card Committee. It will be a major commitment for Russell Street School staff to adjust the way in which they're thinking about grading. And it will be a major commitment for parents to adjust the way in which they think about grading. So we're all aware of that. You know, Heidi's talked about how her team has started to think differently about grading, how they're collecting grading, how they're reporting grading out to parents, you know, based on standards already. Want to talk about that a little bit?
Yeah, yeah. So each assessment that we give, math assessments, reading assessments, we attach a score sheet so that students know how they did on their assessment. So all of those score sheets that we've developed over the years for the old report card model, we have to completely redo, because we want to have a category for each item, our line item that's on the new report card, so that the information that goes home with assessments is relevant and easily transfer, you know, it makes sense that it translates to what their report card grade would end up being.
Yeah, absolutely. So having said that, we acknowledge that this will be a learning curve for all of us. So one of the things the Russell Street School staff has said throughout the fall is, we're a little uneasy. And I think that that's natural. You know, we have this new document, we want to make sure we do a good job. These folks hold themselves to high standards. They want to make sure they're reporting data that's understandable to parents, that they have data to back it up. So this year, one of the things you'll see in the next step section is professional development around grading in a standards-based fashion, how we're collecting data, assessments that are attacking multiple standards, we're collecting data in that way. So it's a whole new way for us to be thinking about how we're saving data, how we're collecting it, how we're using, excuse me, some data in percentage form, some in rubric form, how we're then deciding if students are meeting a benchmark. And so there's still an art to that. So I say, you know, we want it to be clear in black and white, there's still an art to grading, and a teacher still has to be able to use his or her best judgment. And the best example that I can give is, if you take a closed-end standard, like multiplication, you could go three-quarters of the way through the trimester and get fifties because you haven't mastered multiplication, and then all of a sudden it clicks for you, and for the last, you know, three assignments or four assignments or five assignments, you get a hundred, because now you know multiplication. If you took an average, it would say you didn't meet the standard. So the teacher has to be able to say, well, they didn't meet it until the end, but now they've met it. Okay? So there has to be some flexibility for an educator to look at the standard, to look at the work, to take observations of the student, to take observations of the classwork, and to say, yes, the student has met the benchmark. And so the last thing we want to do in getting standards-based and more structured is to take the art out of teaching. We've talked about that a lot. I think we have an outstanding staff and want to make sure that they have the flexibility to do what they need to do to be able to do a good job and to be able to report to parents. And so you'll notice the last bullet here, and I say this over and over again, the comments on the report card and the conversations between parents and faculty remain most vital. The conversations that parents have with teachers about how their child is performing is most important. This is a document, it goes in the permanent record, it shows how the student is progressing, but these folks go out of their way with their comments and out of their way to spend time with parents to make sure that every parent knows how their child is doing and will continue to do that. This document will not take that away. Comments won't go away, and the time that we spend with families won't go away.
Yeah, and when we were making the layout, the actual layout of the report card and realizing how dense it really was, the many, many standards that we had to fit on there, we weren't going to give up that, those few rectangles where the comments could go. We reserved space for that. It was worth it to make sure we had that opportunity.
So as we talk about the highlights, and we'll show you a sample in a minute, there's a numeric key for all areas. That includes characteristics of a successful learner, that's a three-number sort of Likert scale. The academic areas have sort of a four-number Likert scale. I mentioned that the ELA section has anchor standards. If you're in the Massachusetts Frameworks from 2011, the anchor standards have two or three standards under them. We went with the anchor standards rather than every single standard to keep the report card from being so long. And we created a supporting document for parents to say, listen, when you look at key ideas and details, here's the three standards that that grade incorporates. Because we felt like trying to grade every single standard would have made it overwhelming for parents to read. Similarly, in math, the content, math content standards are there. In math, they're called something slightly different. There are some breakout standard-like items underneath. And then in science and social studies, each have two standards, as do each of the special subjects, and the comments remain. This is the fifth grade report card. It's a little bit tough to read on the screen for us. I hope the folks at home can see it. The first thing that I'll note, and I mentioned previously, is if you look at the Likert scale for academics, there's the exceeds section. That was a long dialogue, and we did decide to go with exceeds. We wanted to honor the work that our students were doing to go above and beyond, and we went back and forth. So not only had we heard that folks had, some that had not included it decided to include it, but we felt like it was important to us to recognize students who were going above and beyond, and we have many. So that's included there. You'll notice under sections for characteristics of a successful learner, this was a big conversation for us. You'll notice that most of those are not your traditional sits quietly and listens behaviors. There's a couple more traditional behaviors in there, and then most of them are sort of 21st century skills, habits of mind types of things. Takes risks, perseveres, respects.
Thinks critically.
Thank you. Thinks critically. And we talked a long time to pick seven or eight of them that we felt like encapsulated what we hoped Russell Street School students would leave fifth grade with, what we really felt like showed the citizenship skills and behaviors that we felt were most important for successful learning. So that was, you know, multiple meetings just for that section. You know, if you think about math and reading, for the most part, we just copied those standards out of the Massachusetts Frameworks, but we spent a lot of time choosing those characteristics of a successful learner. And go back for one minute. You'll notice it's a numeric key. Those are three and the others four, but we wanted, again, consistency. You're seeing a theme of consistency, and you've heard me talk about a theme of vertical consistency at Russell Street. The staff has talked a lot about vertical consistency. We worked in vertical teams at PD at the last early release day, trying to get more and more cross-teamwork and vertical consistency, so that as students move through the grade levels, parents are feeling like it makes sense, their experience makes sense moving This is page two. You'll notice, again, those literacy standards come right out of the Massachusetts Frameworks, and then science and social studies, rather than, again, we had a long dialogue about going, you know, specifically with earth science and life science, and, you know, breaking science and social studies down, and we decided to go with broader standards. Do you want to talk about that a little bit? I know that, you know, you were a big part of that conversation.
Yeah, I mean, we felt like we didn't want to have, we didn't want to have the experience that we felt like we had to make sure our electricity unit took only one trimester to teach. You know, we didn't think that, we didn't want to have to package it like that. So we felt like the bigger picture, or the bigger skills that we wanted students to come away from with science, would be broader, and it would be across all of our science and engineering units as well. Plus, we weave engineering in throughout the whole year, so how would you isolate that? The broader just makes more sense.
The other thing that's happening is the state's also looking at the science standards, and so rather than try to break them out too much, we wanted to wait and see how that all shakes out. And, you know, as we've talked about in the district multiple times, these documents aren't chiseled in stone, and this was a big leap in the areas that we had, so there was a lot of consensus from the faculty around, you know, let's have some broad areas in science and social studies, it gives us some flexibility to give parents an idea how children are doing. One of the things that was really nice is our special subject staff jumped right on board. You'll, if you recall, if you've had students at Russell Street School, it used to be effort and conduct in special subjects. And we said, you know, "If we're going to value our special subjects, why would we only say effort and conduct? Why wouldn't we put some standards in for your subjects and grade students on the same key?" And so our special subject folks wrote standards for their subjects as well. And so you'll notice those are in the report card now. And so, again, you see a sense of consistency, not only through the academic subjects, but also through the special subjects being graded on the same key. As we think about next steps, we'll be focusing on faculty professional development throughout the year on grading practices. We'll have, after this meeting, we'll have formal family notification in writing of the new document. We expect to host a parent forum with some of the faculty at Russell Street. We will be formally rolling out this reporting document in trimester one, and we have work underway in the district to be putting the report card into Aspen as well, so teachers will be able to grade in Aspen, and will, down the road, have the opportunity potentially to make it available online to parents if the district decides to go in that direction. Any other additions? We'd be happy to answer questions.
I'm glad you, do you want to?
Yeah, just a couple of comments. When we looked at standard-based report cards, we really had to look beyond Littleton and see what's happening out there. Standard-based report cards have been around for a number of years, and they've gained a lot of momentum in K-5 settings, and a lot of research has been very supportive of the results. I mean, it makes sense. In K-5, we're looking for mastery, we're not looking for anything less. And when using a traditional approach to grading, quite often, students in grade five were coming into middle school with very, very high percentiles, and then were shocked when the first report card came home, because the standards are so different when you go to middle school. What I like about what we've done here is we've done this in conjunction with Northwestern Educational Assessments, and so students are truly going to know where they're at in terms of grade equivalency and beyond. And we also, at Russell Street, have something called Achieve 3000 that we're also using. So we're still using some well-coined assessment tools to make sure that we have multiple data when we're assessing students and where they're at. To me, this is exciting. You know, we've talked about vertical alignment, our curriculum is vertically aligned, and that's just part of the process. The next part is, or component more correctly, is having teachers in various grades, grade spans more correctly, working together and making sure that that flow from one grade to another is smooth, and that consistency is there. So I'm excited about this move, and I certainly want to commend the staff and the principals. A lot of hard work, a lot of philosophical discussions. Again, these things don't happen very quickly. People have to work out their differences and then finally come together and, you know, develop a direction for the school, and they've done that very successfully, so thank you.
Thanks. Daryl?
Yeah, I mean, I like this approach here, and actually even the opening comments about moving it not being a comparison against your peers, but it being a comparison against the standards, because that's really what matters, is whether you've got the material, not whether you've won in the classroom setting there. And the other part, it looks like to me this would facilitate, and maybe that goes the question back in terms of, this would give you a better insight in terms of the pacing that the different students are doing through the material, whether a group of them is having difficulties achieving a standard versus ones that already achieved it and ready to move on. So it actually facilitates a better discussion with the parents in that sense. But then to turn it back, what do you talk to the parent about relative to students that may be meeting the standards very early and need, maybe need to be pushed along faster, so to speak, and versus other students that need the classroom support to achieve the standards without affecting, you know, you have a diversity of kids, obviously, in a classroom setting.
Yeah, well, and I'll be interested to see, you know, Heidi can certainly chime in as well. My thoughts on that are, this doesn't really change anything that we do already, it just reports it differently. So I think we do a really good job of that already in talking with parents. We have teachers that pre-test, you know, for instance, pre-tested math units, and then group with differentiated instruction with advanced learners and learners who need more support already, those types of things. We have, you know, all, you know, we use Achieve 3000, we do different things like that. One of the things you'll see in our MCAS presentation, our advanced learners are growing at tremendous levels. So I think that that's happening. What will be nice is, we'll be reporting it out, and teachers are collecting it on their unit assessments in a different way, and reporting it to parents in a different way. So we have a whole bunch of data collection from our standardized assessments internally in databases and all types of things, but what this is forcing us to do is say, "Well, you know, on this math unit assessment, which standard specifically did this attack versus, you know, unit one, this group of students didn't do well overall," and then having to go through it. These guys now are, they know right off the top which questions attack which standards, and I think it's helping them deliver different types of instruction, whether it be advanced or remediated, more quickly. Because it's forcing us to go through the work that we do standard by standard in order to be able to report in this way. And Heidi, you can add to that. But I, so I think we've always done that type of grouping, but this is sort of making us make sure that all of the assessments that we're using are aligned, you know, the questions are aligned to specific standards.
So, yeah, I mean, differentiated instruction is alive and well at Russell Street School. It'd be rare to walk into a classroom and not see little clusters of kids and look around and realize they're all doing something different. And this is just facilitating that even more.
That's what I see, you know, between all the different pieces there, this ties it more together, you know, it makes it consistent across that theme versus just a letter grade, which, you know.
Right.
Right. And like I said, having been in many places, those letter grades from, you know, teacher to teacher, you know, are almost meaningless. In, you know, some places I've been, you know, you couldn't buy an A in one class, and other places they were being given out like candy, you know? So I think this is a much more clear way to know how your child's doing.
Our quotes are going to show up. Everything has its price.
Did we erase that?
He said you qualified at some places.
Not here.
There you go.
I said, "Other places I've been."
Mike, can you ask questions?
No, I apologize for coming in halfway through the presentation, but it seems like, I was reading through this, and it seems like a sensible, you know, change that should be made. It made me wish that I had received these report cards in my schooling career, because it does seem like it's more thoughtful. You know, the comments and things like that seem like it actually gives you more information than just checking a box and then you can hang it on your refrigerator.
I think it does, Mike, I think it's a great point, and I want to acknowledge not only the work of the report card committee, but I want to acknowledge how much work it's going to be for the teachers, because to drill down that far in assessment is a whole lot of work. And Heidi alluded to it, but when you think about having enough pieces of data to accurately report on all those standards, that's part of what, where the anxiety comes from this fall, because these guys hold themselves to such a standard, they don't want to give Johnny a progressing or meets the standard unless they have enough pieces of data. And so some of it's observational, some of it's an assessment, some of it's classwork, some of it's homework, could be any number of things, but it is a whole lot of work to grade all those things versus saying, "Oh, yeah, I just averaged all the, you know, test and quiz grades." It's a different way of looking at it, but it's much better for students, it really is, and the staff is committed to doing it, so I appreciate you recognizing that.
Yeah, and you actually answered, I think, after Daryl's question, and with that, you sort of answered my other question, which is, what was going to be, were there sort of unintended changes that have been made where you, by reporting this way, there's been changes in the curriculum, or not in the curriculum, but in the instruction, when you realized the, you know, breaking it out this way versus the old report card, whether that actually affected the instruction on the backend by realizing that things were not coming out the way you thought they were? But it sounds like maybe you already had other ways of tracking that type of stuff that would have been used.
So, so it's kind of funny to think that this report card is actually making it a little easier on us, because for a couple of years, we've already been assessing students based on the Common Core, and we've been instructing in that way, but our report cards were sort of aligned to a different way. So we were collecting data in multiple ways, and now it's all streamlined? Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's actually, it's actually, you know, our instruction and our reporting are now matched, so it's a good thing.
And I will say this, I think that it is checks and balances. So I think that there, when we first put it together and handed it to staff, I think there were times when people went, "Oh, I better go back and make sure I have enough data points for all of these standards." So I think that we probably did, but it's a good checks and balance to go, "Hey, I got a report on all these things, I better make sure I have enough data points." You know what I mean? So it's checks and balances. We were teaching them, but were we necessarily assessing with enough data points? Maybe, maybe not. So now we have to make sure that, that's part of this grading transition, is this year, we're going through all of our assessment tools and going, "Okay, well, we know that we have five for this, but we only have three for this, so what can we create to make sure that we have a couple more?" So it's a transition year for grading. So to your point, it may not be changing instruction, but I do think there's places where it's changing assessment a little bit.
I agree that this is one of, you know, certainly a very laborious task, and I also think it's one of the best things we can do to make sure that the students and the parents are getting a full understanding of where the child is in the educational process. And I think this is also something that, while it can't be replicated identically in the middle school or the high school, is something that, you know, the other schools in the district can learn from the work that you've been doing. So I applaud both the two of you, and also the committee and the teachers who are going to be taking on yet another initiative that they're going to have to adapt to. But it's one of those good ones where they'll, it'll help improve the product of education, because it might foster, while it doesn't change what we teach, it might foster different conversations between parents and teachers that would then lend itself to helping the child move along and make more progress. And then one question, just for our sake, when do parents start to receive these report cards in terms of a date?
Excuse me, we'll use it in the first reporting period, so that's December. We'll have a parent forum, there'll be a letter, you know, in the next couple of weeks, and there'll be a parent forum before that, so that parents can come and ask questions.
Great. Thank you. I'm sure we'll be hearing about it.
Alex is alluding to a good point. I mean, I think it's important that we saw this, but I think what's more important is that we get a description of the process, which was obviously legitimate, it was in-depth and encompassing. And Scott, you talked about how, you know, this isn't set in stone, this is obviously a dramatic shift in what we have been doing in the past, but that doesn't mean we've crossed the finish line by any stretch of the imagination. You know, I think we can all recognize that Russell Street is still school-age kids where parents, there's a very heavy symbiotic relationship, the parents haven't let go, the kids are not truly independent in terms of the way they go about their schoolwork, the way they begin to become in seventh, eighth grade, and then in high school, where I couldn't check my kids home or give them if they wanted me to, and they certainly don't want me to. So, you know, the parents are going to have a lot of opinions about this, there's no question about it. And there are going to be some that are clearly going to be put off by this, because they are going to disagree that standards-based is the way to go because of their parenting style, or what they, their research that they've done. And they're not necessarily wrong, they're just, they have a different point of view about it. So I think that we need to be prepared for this transition, and I think that we've done everything correctly up to this point to, you know, assowage as many people as we can prior to actually getting their hands on it, which nothing will beat that. That will, the rubber will hit the road at that moment in time, there's no question about it. But I think that anybody who's listening tonight should appreciate the fact that the process was in-depth and encompassing, and yet we're all open to feedback, and it will only be from the parents, it'll be from the teachers as they get more involved with this and actually, you know, use it. And, you know, Mike's point was, is it informing instruction? Well, if it doesn't, then why are we bothering at all in the end? I mean, it's really not, the ultimate end is just to tell a parent how good their kid's doing. It's, can we inform our instruction better, can you inform your instruction better by virtue of doing it? And as I listen, I'm fully confident that that's exactly what's occurring, and I expect to see some tweaks and changes every year as we go through this. And you talked about it too, Scott, some of it won't even be because of us, it'll be because of outside agencies making us think about things a little differently, hopefully for the better, usually, but not always, and we'll see what we can do to respond to that. But I appreciate the effort, and I appreciate, Heidi, what you said about how, you know, for the teachers, it is a lot of work, but you guys seem enthused about it, because I think you really feel like it's going to help you do what you guys like to do and which you do so well. So I'm excited, and I appreciate that, and looking forward to see what actually happens as we use it. Thank you.
Thank you. And again, thank you to Heidi and the committee. It was a lot of work on their part. Thank you very much.
And before Mrs. McGregor sits down, we had a number of teachers and administrators attend portions of the MasCue conference in the last two days, and it really focuses, we have thousands of administrators and teachers together.
MasCue was an acronym for what? We talked about this last time.
It's a technol, Massachusetts Technology.
Computer-using educators.
There you go. And it's just incredible, because you have thousands of people congregated together that want to talk about next practice, and the excitement in the room is just incredible. And I'm really proud to announce that Mrs. McGregor offered a session at this year's conference, and was well-attended, and she did a terrific job, and, you know, it takes a lot of extra work to prepare for, you know, giving a specialized discussion in an area, and this was educator evaluation and how you can use technology to fulfill the requirements. And very proud of what Mrs. McGregor has done, and it just shows you, as we continue to move along in our district, having teachers go out and share their expertise with a group of people, in this case, a large group of people, is exactly what we're aspiring to do. So thank you for setting the bar, so to speak.
Thank you. Thank you, it was a lot of fun.
Excellent.
Now that it's over.
No, now that it's over, it was really fun, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Heidi.
That's one of those sort of hidden indicators of success that we, you know, don't expect to see every day, we don't measure by that way, but when we see our teachers leading in that fashion, not even in the boundaries of our school district, it's, you know, it says that we're doing something right.
Yes. All right, we're going to move on to old business, school committee goals, Daryl?
Yeah, so in your packet, I put together, based on sort of the comments that we had during our summer session, and just sort of observations moving forward, and sort of keeping the same format, but updating them a little bit here, I consolidated down to three goals for this year, and I wanted to open with, goal one is advocate to advanced student learning. I think that's one of the primary pieces that this school committee here is for on it. And I introduced on the first one here, sort of, and it's one that we personally don't do, but I think we support it, is looking at the role of our student representative to the committee here. And one of the proposals I put in here is extending that role to be something that leads an introduction of student-focused activity celebrating some success in it. I'd like to move the role away from just reporting scores and upcoming activities to one that starts highlighting student accomplishment there across the district there. And maybe part of it might entone, you know, working with the principals on a little homework there, maybe on a monthly basis, rotating through the schools to have something that specifically highlights a student success there. And my other proposal piece in here is, is that the middle school and high school level, it starts being presented by the student, and the teacher is there to support the student, not a student, not a teacher presentation of the student's success. Just a little shift as a reminder to us here, that we're here to make sure that those are the people that are achieving, you know, success. So that was the thought behind the bulk of goal one there. Take a little bit of slightly different It'll take a little bit of slightly different work from both this committee and as we work with the administration to, and in absence of our student rep here, but if you're not here, you get the tasking there. But I think it also, my goal there is also to put more meat back into what the student rep is. There was actually an interesting discussion on the MASC mailing list about the role of the student rep across the different districts there. Continuing on, I think we should still continue our work to expand support with the town boards here, particularly continuing to work with the Board of Selectmen and FinCom to discuss our needs. I think even the presentation, last meeting from Rita on the CPR showed that there's some little things that we need to be doing that are actually going to have cost implications here. And I think making sure that we have a good understanding with the other boards as to what types of other drivers we have, not just student population or course offerings that drive hidden drivers in our budgets there. And I think just establishing a dialogue versus just presenting a budget to them is a means to continue that there. And then likewise, the community awareness of the education funding process and needs there. You know, we talked a lot, and actually we talk here a lot about, you know, we have our appropriated budget, we have the, all of the other funding sources there, and then we have some unmet needs that we actually have to tap the parents for, be it the bus fees, sports fees, donations to support supplies in the classroom. Those are all things, I think, continued awareness of where we're making trade-offs and where we're having to allocate those costs, I think will help us reach the types of consensus that we need in terms of where we want to go on it. So that's my proposal for under goal one there, and I, like I said, I tried to synthesize that from the discussions that we've had over the last several months there. Do you want to sort of discuss some more?
Yeah, let's do one at a time, I think that's a good idea. Anybody have any comments on that?
Just a question on number two, expand support with town boards of education needs. I think we all know what you're going for there, my only question would be if we were to change the word support, maybe to discussions, something more, or something less ambiguous that might provide a little more clarity to someone who's just looking at this document for the first time. But I really like the way that this is sort of front and center of goal one. It touches on everything we do as a school committee in terms of evaluating the superintendent, in terms of handling the budget, in terms of making sure we're mission-focused. I also think it's succinct enough so that it's more actionable than it might have been in the past.
Yeah, I agree, that last point was actually good. I was glad when I, well, I first thanked all of you for putting this together, I wasn't a part of the board or the committee when this was put together, but I was happy with it. And I was glad when I opened it, that it was digestible, and it wasn't, I was expecting a longer document than I received. I think goal one was the one that I was happiest to see, I was happiest to see that it was the first goal of the three, and that included the types of things that involve the students. I think that's important. I'm glad to see that we're going to put more of an emphasis on the student representative. I'm wondering what other support is available for him, so it's not such a burdensome, you know, position. I'd love to know from the principals how involved, like, for example, the student councils are at the middle school and the high school with talking to him. I mean, I think ideally, when we have issues that come up that are going to affect, I mean, obviously all the issues we do talk about affect students, but when there's something that they might have strong opinions on, I would love to have the student representative come with a message from the student council on, you know, what their perspective is on whatever issue that's going to be debated at the upcoming meeting. So I don't know, maybe, it might not be the appropriate time to talk about it now, or maybe it is.
The five representatives, it's not just, you know, Ryan's the spokesperson for them, you know, they sort of nominated him for that role, but there are other student reps that you can meet with on a regular basis, and I think that's sort of part of the design. And they run for election, so they'd be happy, I think, to meet with you if you wanted to arrange either a time in this forum, or perhaps, I don't know how it would work within your rules to meet with them, but I, you may have to, I think there's sort of regulations that govern that.
Yeah.
But there's, you know, it's certainly something that I think the students would be receptive to, and another way to have their voices heard, so thank you for that offer.
No, and I think I'd probably, I would ask for maybe another conversation to know the involvement with that. I know we have the, this group of students, and then we have the school councils.
Right.
And then we have, so it seems like there's a lot of these different boards, and I'd love to know how they interact with each other, and most specifically the student council, because that was one, you know, I talked about it when I was nominated for this board, that was one where I thought it was completely underutilized when I was there, so I'd love to know if it's changed and if they can be helpful.
Great.
I like goal one, I specifically like, Daryl, what you said about expand community awareness of education funding process and needs. We've talked about that in the past, and I think we haven't taken full advantage of the opportunity to do that. So I'm very happy to see that out there, and I support the rest of it as it's written, so that's a great start. Chuck, you know, you jumped it over late, do you want to just keep moving, or do you have a particular comment?
Yeah, I'm sure that you guys covered everything up. I'll watch the tape and.
All right.
Comments next week at the end of the meeting.
This is the draft, so, you know, we'll all take another step to digest this, but go ahead, Daryl, goal two.
Yeah, so goal two is, you know, I want us to continue looking at how we're spending our time with this meeting to make sure that we're sort of taking full advantage of, you know, of the time that we get from the principals and the superintendent and any of the teachers that do come for the different pieces here. So again, it was just, again, keep the meetings, continue working on keeping the meetings focused here, how the presentations hit the themes there, pull any of the background material that, you know, we can read at our leisure offline and use the time with the folks here for the in-depth discussion. You know, I can absorb a lot of material, I don't need to have it, you know, just presented to me there. And I like the dialogue that we have here, you know, even as indicated in the last several meetings where we've had a very engaging dialogue. Unfortunately, if we just use the time for presentation, we don't have much time left to actually use the folks here on it. And then, you know, we will make it through the rest of those policies this year.
We've already had a meeting. We will.
All right, any comments on goal two? I appreciate what you're saying there, Daryl. I mean, I think we do a good job of the Rita head packet, I think we're ahead of a lot of boards and things like that, but you're right, I think it's always good to take a look at and see if there's other ways we can do it. And I also think you're right, I mean, there's a balance, you know, it's one thing for us to get background and general information material offline, that doesn't mean that the rest of the, right, community always, even though we do put everything online, they're not as engaged as we are, or should they be. So it's a balance, but I think that, you know, if we can definitely, I think sometimes it's along the lines of, if we're, if we have a slide up and it's data-related, then let's just let it sit there and we'll all digest it, and people on television can see it, anybody in the audience can see it, and we don't, and, you know, the presenters are doing a pretty good job of not parroting what's already up there. And I think if we just, you know, continue to be cognizant of that, I think we will get more time to dive in, which I think is what we all enjoy.
Right, and there may be other things, you know, that we might want to consider moving under the consent agenda. If we're just going to just say, here's the, you know, here's the energy report, which we've actually taken out of this, we can just put those under the consent agenda and not have time to say, here's the report that we're not going to read during this meeting. You know, there's just little efficiency things that we could be thinking about here on it. And then the last one, I need to work with Kelly just to get some words here. So over the last year, we worked on developing Vision 2020, and our goal was obviously supporting the development and implementation of that, that vision. Now we are entering the, is it the second or third year of the implementation, which is now the first year of DDMS. And again, I think.
The second year, actually, we're still in the first year, since we didn't implement until March, but depends on how you look at it.
Yeah, it's not aligned to the calendar here. So again, I think from the board's perspective here, it's making sure that we're supporting the implementation and execution of the DDMS as it affects the vision and any modifications and updates as we go forward. And I just need to update the paragraph here to reflect that part of it on it. I had just simply just did a preliminary edit for it.
All right, why don't we do this, then? Why don't you go ahead and do that? We've had a decent discussion tonight, but if there are other, if there's other feedback that you want Daryl to have prior to a final copy of this for the next meeting, then go ahead and do that. But the goal would be to finalize this and vote it at the next meeting, and then move forward with it and use it for the rest of this year. Is that okay?
Excellent.
And I'll catch the, Alex, your comment on number two, the discussion versus support.
Thank you.
All right. We're going to finish old business here, and then we're going to circle back to the turf field presentation. So the last item under old business is update on the high school intersection. So we've had discussions here at school committee, and we've had interaction with the state highway department, Department of Transportation about trying to address the, what we consider a very busy and conceivably dangerous intersection coming out of the high school. We've been a little frustrated up to this point in terms of, it's a state highway, there's not a whole, really anything we can do locally. So we've been a little frustrated in the sense that when we've interacted with the highway department, excuse me, the Department of Transportation, we haven't really been able to come to any kind of consensus that, yeah, there's something that we could do. We did have another conference call with them, Steve and Kelly and I had it. It was a good call. They weren't able to, or weren't willing to, you know, say that a light, an actual traffic light, you know, red, yellow, green, whole thing would work, because they are constrained by their, you know, policies and procedures. What they did talk about, though, was other solutions, which they had in the past, outside of that particular solution. And what they are talking about is signage and flashing lights that are a lot better than the one we have up there. They were actually talking about removing the one that's there, and going with something more street-level and more signage that would conceivably, you know, slow down traffic as we, as people approach that intersection. So the way we left it was, they were going to come up with a proposal that we could then evaluate, and if we can, you know, come to an agreement on it in terms of cost and timing and things like that, and what the impact, hopefully, the deposit would be, then we can, we'll talk about that, and if we, you know, think it's good, then we can, we'll have to work with the town too as well, this won't be a unilateral decision on our part. But basically, the ball is in their court, they are working on a proposal, they'll come back to that with us, we'll take a look at it, we'll discuss it, and we'll get the other town parties involved that need to be involved, and hopefully we can have some kind of action take place. They were very good about, you know, getting a proposal in place in a couple of weeks, they weren't talking months. So if we can get a proposal in place and we can discuss it and get some sign-off on it, hopefully, you know, sometime in the next few months, we have an implementation and it won't be that far out. Sound reasonable summation of what occurred?
Yep.
Anybody have any questions on that?
Yeah, is the proposal something along the lines of what they did over at Kimball's?
Yes, that's exactly what they're talking about, is big signs, triangular, big flashing lights, you know, pedestrian sidewalk, or, you know, school zone, you know, those kinds of things. We haven't seen the proposal yet, but that's exactly what we offered up, and they were like, "Yep, we know what you're talking about, yes, you know, that's something." And we talked about other high schools that have similar markings at the, show at Tech and things like that. So they have a good idea, and it was clear that, like, "Oh yeah, we know what you're talking about, yes, we could probably come up with something that would, you know, be reasonable for that." And so they, it wasn't like they were hesitant or didn't really understand what we were asking about, they clearly understood what we were asking about, and seemed supportive of that type of solution. So the devil will be in the details, and so let's wait to see what they come back with. But it was a better conversation I think we've had in the past, and then at least, you know, they were willing to, you know, consider alternatives, and, you know, seemed enthusiastic about trying to come up with a solution with us, so that was pretty decent.
Do you know if they were willing to discuss the speed limit, or do they try and as low as it'll go?
I think, we'll have to see what the proposal is, I don't think the speed limit is really part of it, I think it's just more of a where, making motors aware of where going through, and hopefully the speed limit by definition will go down.
That thing at Kimball's caught my eye, though, when I first drove by that.
Yeah, yeah.
I remember the speed limit was part of the discussion, maybe about a year ago now, when we were having the same conversation, and they had initially said no to many of these things that they're now saying yes to, or at least they were expecting them to.
You know, again, it's a proposal, and I feel perfectly comfortable pushing back and modifying and trying, you know, if at the end of the day, they say, "No, we can't," or "We won't for this reason," at least we'll know why.
Right.
So feel free to, as we see the proposal, we can definitely think about whether or not that's in there, and if it's not, ask why it can't be, and we'll go from there.
I have a question before we move on to the next subject. I don't want to revert in the agenda, but the goals, I forgot I had a comment that I wanted to ask. Has this committee thought at all about having, like, pre-authored motions that are going, that are part of the packets?
We never talked about that.
Because I know a lot of boards, the board that I work with, the board of higher ed we have, in your packet you get all the motions, pretext, they're labeled, you know, with the title, and so the, as the committee, you know exactly what's being asked of you ahead of time when you read the packet, you know exactly the wording. We don't have to worry about fumbling over saying the wrong thing here.
Can I reply to criticisms?
No, I just know that, we've all done it at one point, even, you know, the simple motions, you fumble over the words, and then that becomes, you know, the official motion. So I wanted to toss that out, as something to maybe consider having.
Is that something he's volunteering for?
I'd be happy to help out there.
I know, I mean, I think that that is.
I mean, it's simple.
Yeah, I think it would fall under the purview of the chair and the superintendent as they're forming the packet. I think it's a good idea, I don't have any problem, because it's just a suggestion, we don't have to take it at face value, we can always modify it. I think you'd be right, Mike, I think that it would help to, you know, give us a framework to go off of. If we, 90% of the time that we use the exact framework, then that's not, wouldn't be a surprise to me, but it just, we do have the leeway of the other 10% of the time if you want to change it, or not even make a motion, it might be at the point where we say, "No, we're not going to make that motion tonight."
Yeah, it can always be amended on the fly and subject to amendment. It also allows the community to know really what we are acting upon.
Right.
They can read ahead of time exactly what the wording of the motion is.
And it doesn't even preclude us from making motions that are not in the packet.
Oh, no, of course not.
If there's something that we decide we want to make a motion on that we haven't, you know, made a pre-motion on, I like that idea, we can, we'll talk about that, and we'll put some examples in there as we go forward. That's a good idea.
Thanks.
All right, so, any other old business? No? Okay, so let's circle back. The only presentation that we didn't get to do was the turf field committee, wanted to give us an update on where they are. They were busy with, yeah, the, that guy wanted to give us an update on where he was, he was busy coaching an eighth-grade football game tonight, and Chuck's son was at that eighth-grade football game participating, so it's a tough night to be out there, but...
It was. How do you guys? I have one over there. Jordan.
Just so the microphone can hear you. Okay. So my name's Michael Crory, I'm a member of the turf committee that we formed, there's really only two of us, kind of three, but right now where we sit, we're trying to get permission from the school. We've already, you know, kind of asked to use your facilities to take existing grass fields, which you have now, which is Alumni Field, where they play football, night soccer games, girls' lacrosse right now, and transform that into turf, along with the facility, the soccer field and boys' lacrosse field directly behind the high school, the parking lot you go up, and it's the field right there, all the way to the far right. And I've actually been talking to Jim Clyde about that field, and one more season of lacrosse, and we'll have to shut it down for a regrow season because of the traffic of the turf. Last night, I was at the PMBC meeting, PMBC meeting, and they approved $100,000 that was gifted to the town through 15th Grade Road to be given to CPC for us to go for at town meeting for the design, construction, and oversight of this project, which will be done by Gail, if Gail associates, if we are successful at town meeting on the 12th. So the other thing we are asking for from the, from the school committee is for fundraising and for donations, signage on, like, the scoreboard at the high school, I, excuse me, at Alumni. We're looking if we could get significant donations to get just a name, you know, whoever it was, on a 18-inch wide by 10-foot wa, long, you know.
Recognition.
Recognition, yes, on the scoreboard. So, you know, I'm not asking to, you know, align the fields with, you know, those rubber banners that, you know, you do see everywhere, and it is, it's a good way to make money, but I know we're not, we're not looking to do that, we're not... do that. We're not trying to make an advertisement down there. But if we could get some, you know, good fundraising support from people, we're asking that the board gives us the okay to, you know, use that as a point.
Right. So as I understand it, there is an article, Article 7, on the town meeting warrant that will allow the use of CPC funds for the design, to pay for the design of the, of the fields that you're talking about. It's not an article to approve the building of the, of the facility. It's just the design plans.
That's correct.
And then at that point, it would be another town meeting article to how we would fund it, whether it's inside the levy, outside the levy, debt or not. And we would also know what the final price tag was, which we don't know yet.
Correct.
The $100,000 we're talking about now is strictly for the design phase.
That's it.
And that is money that was already given to the town by virtue of going to CPC to use of it, the state matching funds that can be applied towards it versus if we just paid for it out of the general fund or if we did an assessment outside the levy just for the design phase. In terms of the signage that you're talking about, that would be something we would address if we were actually going to put the field in and we got donations.
Okay.
You're not talking about, we're not doing any fundraising. You guys aren't projecting to do any fundraising relative to the design, right?
No, but if any money we do get through fundraising, it's going to.
Right, right.
This, this spring.
Right. I know, you know, we've been, I've been at a select meeting where this was on and it was an interesting conversation and it was, because it was, the finance committee was there, we were there and the CPC was there for a variety of agenda reasons, not strictly about the turf field. But there was a lot of discussion that we all got to listen to by virtue of being in the room. And I, for me personally, what I'm trying to keep my head around is that this is not a borrowing article. It is not a vote to build the turf fields. It is strictly a vote to use the $100,000 via the CPC to do a design. We've talked in general terms about whether or not our use of our facilities to have turf fields, what it would mean for our athletic program. You know, Mike Lynn has chimed in on that a little bit. You know, he's not here tonight, which is fine. Because again, I think that a lot of other questions are going to get asked and answered if the design goes through. If the design doesn't go through, all those other questions in terms of signage and fundraising and who's going to use it when and what's the positive impact, you know, become moot. So I know that one of the things that I'm thinking about as a school committee tonight is, you know, would we take a motion to support Article 7? I know that the PMBC has. I know that the Park and Rec Commission has. I believe the Finance Committee has. I don't believe the Selectment have yet, but they will. I believe they are. That's on their agenda on Monday, right?
Yes, yes. Finance Committee voted not to support Article.
Finance voted not, not, voted no. PMBC voted yes. Park and Rec voted yes. So kind of going through that process relative to town meeting. That's why we're having, this is why it's a little bit important to have this discussion tonight because we will not meet again before, we will meet again before town meeting, but not prior to the warrant being published. So if we can have a discussion about this and entertain motions, I think now's the time to do it. Relative to the, the design aspect of it. Now I know that I'm not naive to the fact that some of the design aspects of it will entail a discussion about the validity of turf fields and, you know, the positive or negative impacts and alternatives and things like that. But given that, I will, does anybody have comments or questions?
Just before we start, you said you had two requests. One was to allow the names on the score, a name on scoreboard. What was this, the other piece? And then I want to circle back to what you've asked.
I'm, I'm here just asking for approval from your board.
Support from.
Support.
To use.
For Article 7.
That's what I wanted to clarify because originally it was to use the, for the field.
I'm sorry.
I just want to make sure, because I tried to make sure I understand what we're.
Well, yeah, it ultimately would be that. You know, do we as a school committee, do, would we support turning grass fields into turf fields for use by us and the rest of the community, which they already are used by us and the rest of the community. It's not like they're not being used by youth sports. They are. So yeah, you know, are we okay with that?
So if we were to vote to support the article, in essence, we are allowing for the use or the conversion from grass to turf.
Because we're, you know, I'll tell you where I'm coming from on that. I don't have a problem, you know, looking at, you know, should we, you know, if, if the town decided they wanted to put turf fields in and we want, would I support them going on in our fields?
Yes.
The question of Article 7 and how it's been developed, I think is a different question. That's why I just wanted to make sure I understood what, what we were looking at. And that's why I wanted to circle back to what you think, what you might be looking, you know, possible motion tonight for on it. Because he asked two different questions and you asked a different question.
Relative to a motion, I think that we need to seriously consider making a motion whether or not we support Article 7 because the town meeting is coming up. Other boards are discussing this and voting on it. I feel like we are a part of this process and we should do that. In terms of using, you know, allowing the use of our facilities, I don't feel like we need to make a motion on that tonight. If it's part of the discussion, that's okay because you're not going to be able to uncouple it altogether. So, you know, I think we're okay with that. And I think we've already more or less acceded to that, that yes, boy, if we had turf fields and the town supported it, we wouldn't tell them, no, you can't put it there. We'd be like, yeah, you can put it there and we'd be happy to have it and our kids would be benefited, you know, in some ways by using it. There are other concerns. It's not, it's not a, you know, obvious that, you know, everybody would accept turf fields as being the best solution.
Right. That's what I mean. It's a different, it's a different discussion. That's why I just wanted to, to do that. Do we have what the wording of Article 7 is? I was going to just go find my warrant, but I don't have that.
I don't have it with me and it's not in our packet. Let's, let's keep talking about it and maybe Kelly or Steve can run that out. Yeah, we'll grab it in a second. So Darryl, do you have any other comments or do you want to start a discussion or?
Why don't you hit me at the end here? I just want to see what Article 7 specifically is asking for.
Alex, or Mike?
Yeah, good question. The $100,000, was that donated specifically for the design of this or is it money that was donated and that chosen to utilize this way?
It was donated to the town.
No, it was not donated.
A gift.
No, it was not a gift. It was a negotiated settlement as part of the 40B that they're putting in. It was a payment to the town for various concessions.
For, right, for active recreational.
So I don't want anybody implying that there was a gift to the town of $100,000.
I'm sorry, yeah. It was earmarked for active recreation.
Yeah, so it was earmarked for this purpose. It wasn't, this wasn't a conversation that.
It wasn't earmarked for turf fields.
No.
Earmarked for recreation.
Active recreation.
Was that the case in the 40B agreement, in the community, in the host community agreement? Or is that later appropriated to, is that just because it's going through CPC that it has to now, now be spent on active recreation?
No, the, there was two payments to the town. One for, I think it's, it's for the development on McIntosh Lane, which was a town, which was a specifically earmarked for active recreation because a lot of the land was not, the open space really wasn't active recreation land. So they used that. And then there was a separate payment from the 40B to the town. And I think they're specifically talking about the $100,000 that was designated for active recreation.
Thank you.
All right. So Article 7, before we go any further, just so you can.
It's on the screen too.
Yeah. "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate transfer from available funds and/or borrow the sum," it says here of $200,000, but I think that number's being, because they're getting, they're actually getting proposals, that's why. The $200,000 was a placeholder prior to receiving proposals. "To be expanded by the permanent municipal building committee as directed by town meeting for the purpose of funding the design construction of two turf fields at the Lilton High School and the Alumni Field or to take any other action in relation there too."
And PMBC did the other night, changed that number from $200,000 to $100,000 in the article. So Article 7 is the $100,000 amount.
Okay. Sorry, and there is, there's clarification listed here. "Article 7 is a petitioned article requested by more than 100 registered voters. It is a citizen's petition. The amount in the motion reflect the permanent municipal building committee's review of proposals received from two engineering firms. Gail Associates came in at 89,000. Green International's was a 192,500. A funding request is pending before the Community Preservation Committee, whose favorable recommendations require for town meeting to be able to expand CPA funds. Design funding is sought now in order to be able to have bids in hand for May 2015 town meeting and a further funding request of between 1.4 and 2 million for construction. Construction funding would be a two-thirds approval of borrowing by town meeting and approval of a debt exclusion ballot question at the May 2015 annual town election."
And then there's a separate question asking for the town to transfer the money to the CPC?
That was a discussion we had a week or so ago or two or three weeks ago when we were at Selectment, I think.
Yeah, it's Article 6. It's on the screen.
Article 6.
So first we, first the town would vote to appropriate the money to CPC and then it would vote on Article 7 to then expend that money. Is that correct?
Right. But Article 6 is written as such. "To see if the town will vote pursuant to mass general law, blah, 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 to appropriate transfer to the Community Preservation Recreation Reserve, the following sums totaling $200,000 for active recreation purposes, which appropriations also increase the base for CPA state matching funds." And it talks about where the sums would come from, the Orchard Subdivision Mitigation Reserve for appropriations and the 15th Grade Road Mitigation Reserve for appropriation. Right. Article 6 does not specifically talk about the turf fields.
So we don't need.
Doesn't affect our rules. It doesn't affect our decision.
Right. And I don't think any of the other, well, actually the Finance Committee, the Board, Selectment, the Planning Board support Article 6. I think the idea is that the money's going to go to CPC regardless of whether or not it's allocated to turf fields because if it's not used for turf fields, it would then be available for other purposes. And I'm sure that will be.
Well, the reason it's going to CPC is because it's automatically state funds that it automatically triggers.
Right, right. The strategy for any use of that money for active recreation makes sense to go through CPC because you do get the matching benefit from the state, whether it's turf fields and/or other projects and it could easily be and. Then that'll be up to town meeting and the CPC. All right. Who's, who was talking?
A lot of us.
Go ahead, Alex, go ahead.
So I said this the other night when we were at the Selectance Meeting. I think the potential for a turf field could be a benefit, but I think, I know that I need more information before I'm convinced that this is the way to go at this point in time. So I guess my questions are generally, what's the lifetime expectancy of a turf field? And I know this number because we have, well, now we do have a bid. So we could speak to an engineering, the engineering firm, either Gail, presumably Gail Associates or possibly Green International about the specifications. But my concern is that this is, one of the ways this is being presented is as a cost-saving mechanism and as an environmental protection mechanism because it saves money on pesticides and treatment for the turf, for the grass fields that we have now. My concern is that if there's a 10-year lifespan of the new turf fields, which I believe Kate Hodges suggested at that Selectance Meeting, my concern is then 10 years from now, are we looking to spend the similar amount of money to again maintain, maintain the fields? And if so, are we really saving 1, 2 million dollars or however much the cost of the field is in that 10-year span by just not, not treating those particular fields? Because treatment will still be necessary for the adjacent field. So if we're talking about the proposed turf at the high school, for that field on the far right, we would save costs from, we wouldn't have to mow that field. We wouldn't have to treat that field with pesticides. But we would the adjacent fields that aren't turf because those would remain to be grass. So my concern is, is there really a financial benefit to doing it that way rather than looking at other ways of solving the issue? Which brings me to the second question I have.
Can you hold on one second?
Do you want to respond to that?
I have, I have some research that I've done, but do you have an answer to that, to the question about replacement costs after you put a fee?
Well, it'll be more than what is estimated now, but they're anywhere from 150 to 300 to replace in 10 to 12 years. Westboro just got 15 years out of their turf. So 15 years is pretty good. That's, that price will probably go up in 10 to 12 years, I'm assuming. I mean, everything's going up, so.
But the key thing that I, in my vision, is you don't replace the whole thing.
No.
What you're replacing is the fill, the rubber pellets that make up the actual field. The infrastructure goes way beyond 10 or 15 years. It is really more of a permanent type of structure and doesn't require, you know, maintenance. It just, once you do it right, you know, assuming that you do it right, it's there. So the, the replacement cost I think that you're alluding to would be, is.
Not building the same thing.
Right. And Mike's right. Right now, that's like, you know, 150 to 200. That could change obviously over time. And you have to do it. There's no question that it has to be done at some point. And any, I think any plan that gets put forth would have to address maintenance in not only terms of in cost, but because you want to make sure you have a good facility. It's crazy to do it once and then let it go to, you know, hell in a handbasket and, you know.
Back in the same position I was 10 years ago.
But I think that the, the point is, is that you're only replacing the rubber pellets. It is a minimal cost. And one of the things that the fundraising aspect, I know that they're talking about is conceivably fundraising for, specifically for maintenance akin to what the track group did. There's, you know, strategies that are being debated about that. I don't think we'll have anything set in stone relative to town meeting. And it is an issue. There's no question about it. But I don't think it's, it's certainly not 1.2 to 2 million every 10 years. That's just not what it is.
So it would work out close to 45,000 a year if you were to amortize it out.
Right.
Then you would balance that against what it costs to maintain the fields on a yearly basis.
Which, which right now, Park and Rec pays $30,000 a year for maintenance, fertilizer, slum, seed.
That's materials.
Materials, right. That's what they, that's, they take the use, from the youth sports and they pay for maintenance of the fields. Highway has their own number that they use and they've broken it down for me and laid it all out. I've talked to Westford, Chumsford. They've just built their, basically the two newest fields in the area and they're on eight-year warranty contract deals where the maintenance is done through the turf company that put it in at, at $900 a year. So that's a huge savings from 30 to 900. And, and maintenance on these turf fields is they come out, they brush all these black pellets up to get the, the tines of the synthetic turf to stand straight up again. And they do all the inspections of the turf. They do all the pole, the seams. They take care of all that for you for the first eight years of that turf. In that time, if we want to, you know, figure out a way to maintain these ourselves, they'll put money aside, I guess, to buy the, buy the equipment. I mean, it's just, it's literally, you know, a little hitch that goes on the back of, you know, your green farm tractor and they drag it. So maintenance wise, I mean, I know there was other things said, but that's, it's a big, there's a huge savings with the turf fields on maintenance.
All right. Do you want to get a second question else?
Yeah, actually, I'd just respond to the comments. You're referring to up at the high school with the remainder of the field, where the high school practices football, for instance, that those would still need to be maintained. Those, there's basically one pseudo football field that's striped out there. It's probably two weeks or something like that. Within the fields where this is proposed, there are, for the high school alone, there are 11 different patterns that the highway department has to paint.
Yeah.
Paint, stripe. It's used for three different flag football fields. It's used for soccer, field hockey. It's, it's amazing. You go up there, there's lines all over the place. The time that it takes for Sean and his crew, a crew of two, to do all this striping is incredible. Jim, Jim, I don't know how he gets it done. He's the president of the baseball softball association. I, I feel guilty if I said, hey, I have a playoff baseball game down in Shake Lane. I can get down there and, you know, strike that field. We did most of that ourselves. We'd take the chalk lines out and do that because these guys are straight out. And that's not cutting. That's not, I mean, there's, there's so much other, you know, the fertilizing, the maintaining, watering with the water can over at the Alumni Field. So there's, there's so many cost savings aside from the pesticides and the, the actual materials that Park and Rec, you know, the $30,000, the fertilizer and whatnot. So paint, that, that machine goes down, they're in a mad scramble to try to figure out how to get the fields painted. So there's, there's other considerations and there's things you don't even think about where there are a lot of savings.
Can I just make one? On that too, currently Parks and Rec standards are, however Jim Clyde would. On that too, currently, Parks and Rec standards are, however Jim Clyde would describe those, the guys he has, for every 13 acres, you need one man, okay? There's two guys that maintain 62 acres, all right? So to take two fields off their plate is, is a lot. I mean, it takes them a long time, like, like Chuck just said, to strike that soccer, football, lacrosse, then, then halffields or quarterfields, whatever they were to play, you know, flag football, it's, there's a lot of time, I mean, we're talking three, 375 hours a year they spend lining these fields, cutting these fields, weed whacking, you know, on and on. And, and I just think, you know, by going turf, it eliminates trying to build more grass fields that we don't even have enough guys to cut right now, you know? So I, I think in cost savings, this is.
Well, if we were to add more grass fields, we have to acquire land in order to put the grass fields on, because we don't have the land.
Right.
So, there's that, I mean, there's, you keep peeling the onion.
Right.
It's, with any argument, right?
And my second thought is more in terms of FinCon, what were some of their concerns?
That's probably going to fall on me. I didn't, I didn't make the meeting. I had a million things going on, I mean, I was working. And I, and I missed the meeting, to be honest with you. I saw Steve Moore last night, and he was pretty upset, so, I, I mean, and I apologized to him, but I, I dropped the ball on that one. And that's about as much as I can say about that, it was just my mistake.
I wasn't sure if they had some financial concern.
No, I, I, you know, I, it's cost analysis thing that I was supposed to present to them, and.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I, I'm still thinking. I, I think this is where I would have, I guess I wasn't exactly sure what was being asked of us beforehand, so I'm still kind of just trying to process it. I'm definitely supportive of the idea of having turf fields in town. What our role in that is, I guess I'm still trying to discover. But if, you know, if, if the recommendation is that this, the best use of these, this $100,000 or whatever, you know, we don't have the space to build new fields, then we might as well put it to good use doing something like investigating and designing this turf field. So I think I'm, I'm supportive of it. I, as to the question of how we authorized to go about that, I'm not sure when that would happen, is there another presentation that we get with the design, or, you know, what, I'm not sure what our role is with that, another meeting maybe we?
I think that it's kind of been coming upon us tonight, if we, if we support Article Seven and move forward, I think that's, I think they are coupled.
Use your word, Mike.
So if we're, if we're supportive of moving forward of Article Seven tonight, we're basically given the blessing saying, go do the feasibility, and if, if it comes back, the town votes for it, we're okay with it being done on our, our property. Am I wrong, or?
No. Would we reserve the right, you know, to, is there, would we have concerns with the final design and how it's done, you know, there's, it's been in the news all lately about, you know, maybe these pellets cause cancer, and, you know, I'm just wondering, do we, if we did make that motion, do we reserve after this design process to review the, is that even a role that we would have in it? I guess I'm.
It would, I mean, and I don't think that you need to wait necessarily if you think that's a valid concern. I mean, that's the thing I'm struggling with personally, is supporting the design versus supporting turf fields altogether. I have a personal opinion about it, I'm going to give it in a few minutes, but, you know, if you think that's something you, you want to talk about right now, then I think we should talk about it right now. Because Chuck's right, I mean, the cynical point of view is, is that, well, if you approve $100,000, it's a done deal, the whole thing is going forward, and we never stop. Personally, I think that is cynical, I think just because we've never stopped before, each project stands on its own merits for all the boards that debate them, and all the voters that come to town meeting, and all the voters that go to the ballot. So, you know, that's the process, I think it's a good process, I don't have any problem with it. So to say cynically, well, gee, you know, if we say yes now, we can never say no again, that's not true. I mean, we can say no, it's both as boards and as voters at town meeting, and voters at, at the ballot, and we certainly have, you know, influence in, in the town, you know, so there's multiple opportunities to do that. However, you know, if you want to talk about it now, and I'm not going to argue until you shouldn't.
Well, I guess my concern is, I can't talk about it.
I just don't, right.
You know, I don't, I'm not in a position to talk about it now, but I'd be curious to know, you know, given it's the first time we've talked about it, I would be curious to know what your opinion is, I'd like to hear, you know, if there's members of the community who have thoughts on it.
Well, we'll definitely open it to members of the community, typically what we would do is we would all go down our line, and then before we took a motion, well, we would certainly open it up.
So I'm, I think I'm all right, I'm comfortable with that.
So I would, I would say that if, if I were to make a motion tonight, I would propose that our representative to the Park and Rec would be involved in some way, shape, or form in the, the design and designing. Just so we do have some continuity and some, some say. And we do have a representative on the PMUC as well. So we do have connectivity to the project.
Okay.
Or to the feasibility at this point, and then if it gets approved to the project.
You all set?
Yeah.
Yep, that's fine, Chuck?
I, I, I think like all of us, it's been, it's been a buzz for a long time around town. I've certainly been, again, president of the baseball and softball association, I've seen the limited number of fields that we've had. Fortunately or unfortunately for baseball and softball, the numbers have gone down, but with the numbers going down, kids have been going to play in lacrosse, and that has put a strain on every field. You know, the lacrosse is getting kicked, you know, go use the outfield, the Whitcomb, go use the parking lot, next to the parking lot of the middle school, which we call it a practice field. They've just kind of kicked around, and lacrosse, the nature of the sport, it's, it's violent on the turf. So I, you know, in my research, and talking to members of other communities, surrounding communities, whether it be Westford, Mike mentioned Chumsford, my alumni is a Varian, folks in acting, they, they have seen tremendous gains. The fields that they still, the fields that have been freed up by being able to utilize and maximize the use of the fields that they have, have allowed them to open up, and there's no struggle or fight between baseball and soccer. I hope Pat Stern's watching. But it, I think, I think, we could go back to 1999, or whenever it was decided that the high school was going to go, the high school went. It would be great if we had purchased the land where Slay Ride Lane is, maybe we wouldn't be having this discussion tonight. I mean, there's, there's a lot of those what-ifs, you know, the positioning of the high school, there's, there's plenty of things that we could say what-if, but we are where we are. And, you know, maybe some people would say the Morgan property is the way to go, but that's several years down the road, and how much is that going to cost us in excavation and in preparation and building infrastructure? It just, I think that the time is now, I think it's the right time, especially in light of what Jim Clyde's saying about our fields. When we shut down a field, we don't have another one to go to, there's no plan B. You know, so we are just, people are, if you used to get two hours for, for a practice, now you have an hour and 15 minutes, and then everybody's trying to jam it in. And Mike says the same thing with the, with the gymnasiums for basketball. So I, I think, I'm, I'm very much in support of it. And I have done some research on the pellets, and the, you know, goalies ingesting pellet dust, and I, I've also seen a lot of data that has poo-pooed some of that research. So it, there's, there's going to be a lot of information out there, and we just need to make sure that we're looking at it as deeply and intelligently as possible, and, you know, kind of not throwing grenades and running. But I'm very much in support of it, I'm prepared to make a motion tonight, in support of the school, of it being done on school property, and in support of us supporting Article Seven for the feasibility.
Design, not feasibility, design.
Design, sorry.
Okay. Joe? So, I guess that's where my concerns start to come a little bit, not necessarily the merits of turf and the other pieces there, it is about part of the process here. When, when I first start, saw some of the pieces out of the, I think it was from the planning board, which was proposing like $10,000 for a, a study of, a field study, to see what's the town situation with fields here, from both needs, as well as which ones should be upgraded, and any other pieces there, which I thought that was a good first step. And then I saw the proposal to go directly to designing two, well, at first it was designing three fields, and then I guess it's designing two fields now. So I don't really feel informed as to what this proposal really is. I'm supportive of, you know, you know, if the town does decide to build turf fields, that we obviously would accept that gift there. I'm running into a personal conflict here in terms of, I'm not sure that, you know, where I would vote at town meeting relative to the expenditure of the $100,000 there, because there's a lot of priorities floating around, not saying that, you know, just as in terms of a taxpayer, and, and not that that $100,000 would be used for some other specific school need there, but there's a lot, there's a big list of things that we need in this town of it, and.
But this has to be specifically under the CPA, right?
Right, but.
It doesn't have to be under the CPA, but it has to be active recreation.
Right.
They could, they could not do the CPA, it'd be stupid. There would be no reason not to do it under CPA, because CPA does allow for, for active recreation.
So I'm supportive of question six, which is to move the money there so that we can maximize the matching funds. I'm, I'm not settled on with the best expenditure of that.
But it would have to be for active recreation, so would, you couldn't earmark it for anything else carte blanche, it would have to be other active recreation considerations, not just.
Right. There. So I don't know where I personally stand on, on Article Seven specifically at this point. I, you know, like I said, I'm supportive of, you know, having improvements done to the, to the school fields, and I could, I would support that tonight there. I'm, I'm not sure about supporting specifically the $100,000 request for, to be designated specifically for, jumping right to the, to the design phase. I think before investing in the design, I think there is going to be a lot of community questions, of which, it sounds like you two have looked at some things there, but I, I think as a community discussion, those are going to be, need to be addressed before investing the, the money towards it, not after spending the money, and then having the questions come up as to whether the town's actually going to support moving forward with it. I'm just concerned about the process there.
Mike, I must probably jump in real quick on that, on that note. Because there is a discussion about whether, one question is, do we support Article Seven, and the other is, do we as a board, if Article Seven passes, and then the town later approves and does want to build the turf fields, do we want to be the host of that? When there is a motion made, if there is a motion made tonight, can we do those two separately, so they don't get confused?
That's a good idea.
Whether or not to support Article Seven, and then also whether or not, should the turf fields come to pass, whether or not we support Article Seven at all, would we be, as a board, okay with lending our property to that?
I mean, you know, any, any board member can make a motion anytime, whether it gets seconded, and then it gets voted, that's what we always figure out, right?
That would be, I guess.
But I, I mean, and I'm not trying to be flippant, so regardless of what, you know, my opinion as the chair is, if you feel strongly enough about it, you can make any motion you want. And again, this is what I'm struggling with a little bit, is sort of the, the coupling versus uncoupling of, you know, I think we're all in agreement that any really nice facility that was built by the town, that the schools would have use of, we in general, we would support that. Even if conceivably, as an individual taxpayer, we were going to vote no, that's, that's up to us. So, and, and I know you're talking about the process. To me, in, I mean, you have a point about, well, gee, is there an overall analysis of field usage, you know, in town, and would that be appropriate to do, you know, first? My point would be that just because we put two turf fields in, doesn't mean we stop. I mean, as a town, we might decide to do a lot of other things relative to field usage, and Chuck's talked about, there are sometimes, there are tensions between which groups use to use which fields when, so there's not a lot of dialogue, it's always ongoing about how we maximize field usage and the benefit of the town, and, you know, maintaining costs, benefits, you know, those kinds of things. So I personally don't think that as a school committee, if we support the, the design of two fields in these specific locations, that we're circumventing an overall process for determining what the best use of field use in active recreation versus passive recreation in the town is. That dialogue will continue, we'll be a part of it when it's appropriate to be, and we won't be, when, quite often, when it's not our decision, especially in terms of passive recreation, it's typically not something we would get involved in. So I don't have a problem personally just supporting Article Seven, and then, you know, hearing the rest of, of the process go down the line, because I don't think by virtue of accepting two turf fields, if the town does decide to support them, that we are circumventing any other process or shortchanging anybody. I personally think that the turf fields are beneficial. I think that there is a cost savings, I don't necessarily think it's as dramatic as everybody thinks, I think there's a lot that has to be considered. But I think that based on where we are as a town, and when I think about it, in terms of the limited resources that we already have, and the maximum use we're making of these fields, and the negative impact it's having on our kids, both youth and high school athletes, I think there's a tremendous benefit to being able to put these two particular fields in. And as a school committee member specifically, I support that, because it will have a dramatic impact for our kids. The fields will open sooner, we'll know exactly when they open. Right now, we don't know when they open in spring, because it depends on when the melt happens, and how long they dry out, so that's a consideration. The benefit would be that we would know when they would open, and we can get out there and we can play, which has a positive impact on our interscholastic athletes. The quality of the field would go through the roof, because right now, the lacrosse team, the alumni field's in great shape, and it always has been, but that's by virtue of limiting use of it. If we put the turf field in, we no longer have to limit use of it, we can make a lot more use of it, and Mike Lynn has already talked about moving an entire sport down there, girls' lacrosse, which currently competes at the high school, would go right down there and get to use that facility all spring long, both for practice and games. And that makes the fields up at the high school better, even the grass ones. So there's a benefit right there, you know, alumni field gets more use. The fields at the high school are in rough shape, because of the amount of traffic and the impact that looks specifically across us, but also just the amount of traffic that we put on those fields, both interscholastically and in youth sports. So having that field be turf means that when the kids do play on it, they're getting a outstanding facility, instead of us spending a significant amount of money and effort to basically fight a battle of deterioration, that we're going to lose. It's just a question of when you lose, you're going to lose. It's just how much money and time and effort are you willing to put in to delay the loss? But eventually, you're going to cross that line, where you have to shut the field down for some period of time, to get it back to manageable, not pristine, manageable, that you can possibly play on it. So I think the benefits, you know, even if it was a break even, or even if it was even a little bit more expensive, I think the benefits clearly outweigh that, but when, given the fact that I think there is a, a cost savings, and we'll have a debate about, and there's all kinds of research out there about how much that savings may or may not be, I think that the benefit clearly outweighs the, the cost, and even if, especially if you're getting a savings, then it becomes to me almost a no-brainer. In terms of safety, there are legitimate concerns, and I'm not talking about cancer, there's, you know, burns, you can, you know, scrape yourself, you have to keep the field clean, because otherwise, there's infections that can happen. But that's part of the maintenance process, and if you do a good job of keeping up with that, then those concerns typically can be alleviated, at least to the comfort level that I have. In terms of cancer risks and things like that, there is material out there, there's not a lot of it, it hasn't been entirely validated. I hesitate to say we should be the ones that wait while everybody else is, is taking advantage of the opportunity that this technology offers. You know, those statistics are very, you've got to be careful, you know, we, there's a lot of reasons not to do a lot of things, if those are the statistics that you are worried about, and it could be literally, should you cross the street? You know? So I personally, I'm cognizant of it, I've seen, I've done, read a couple of the articles that are out there, Chuck's right, I mean, you read one article, and it's definitive that there's a cancer cluster in, in the Pacific Northwest for girls' soccer goalies. And then you read another article that says, well, there's some indication, but I wouldn't call it a cluster. I live with a statistician, and she disabused me of, not just that, although there's other times we've talked about things like that, you've got to be careful about what you read, and how that type of information is interpreted. So I personally would support it, I do believe we should take a motion tonight, we can have more debate about it. I think that it's appropriate for us to have that, that vote and debate, because the rest of the boards in the town are doing it. We do have a citizen petition on the warrant, for better or for worse, it's on the, it's on the warrant, and it's going to get debated, and I think we should chime in on that.
Yes, I'm completely sold on the.
Yes, I'm completely sold on the pros and cons of having the turf field there, I think they're obvious. You just did a very good job of allaying though. But I disagree with you that we should not necessarily wait until those concerns, somebody needs to do that. If it is false, I mean, I don't, you know, I don't care, you're right, everything gives you cancer and everything is a risk of giving you harm, but I think we'd be remiss to go forward spending that kind of money, being the board, it's going to be our students who are using it and if there is, if there's, if there's no legitimacy to these claims, then someone ought to make them before we spend, you know, gobs and gobs of money going forward. That's not, that's actually not the biggest one of my concerns. The biggest one of my concerns is that I wasn't really sure that, I should have expected that we, what we're doing was authorizing the use of the town, the fields for that purpose. And if the town, you know, if the people of the town want to do that, that's great. I would, I would be supportive of that, but I wasn't aware that that's what we were doing. I didn't know, I mean, there are other concerns like, you know, that we didn't talk about, that are more school committee related, like, you know, what's, what are we going to use in the interim when the, you know, the fields are under construction? You know, there's things that have to go with using the fields that I guess I didn't know that we were...
But see, that's my point. I don't think that we're debating that at all right now.
Yeah, okay.
Because Article seven is specifically about the use of CPC funds to fund the design. Now, the PMBC is going to be a part of that process. The Park and Rec has already said in their motion that they're going to be a part of the process. I would expect that we would explicitly say we're going to be part of the process. We have a member on the PMBC, we have a member on the Park and Rec, so even if we didn't explicitly say that we weren't going to, we would be.
Right.
In terms of, you know, any design, you know, that was on our grounds, we would expect, fully expect, and I don't think anybody would ever question, that we would have a significant amount of input on how the process goes and how the questions that are raised get answered. I just don't think that right now, that's exactly what we're voting on, we're voting specifically on Article, you know, whether, in my mind...
Okay, yeah, right, no, so I'm more, I'm more comfortable with that. And then for, as far as like the legal implications of, you know, is that all the standard that we need is to make a motion that, you know, do we have any other obligations with as far as like authorizing somebody else to do construction on the fields, is that the, you know, has anyone vetted what?
PMBC, no.
PMBC. They take care of that.
What take care of that.
What the vote is tonight isn't even an authorization from us, it's just whether, it's just, is informing town meeting goers?
Whether we support...
Whether we support it or not.
Yeah, so I'm more, I'm, yeah, I'm more comfortable with that now.
When, do you have...
Can I just, I just want to go back, you said, you know, shutting down the fields and all that.
Yeah.
So the turf, if it is approved and it's good to go to build, as soon as high school lacrosse is off those fields, the turf company comes in and it's called a summer slammer. They're in and out before fall sports start, you know, next fall, there'll be two turf fields in place if everything goes through. And we shouldn't lose any time, playtime, yep.
There you go. Feel better with that.
Summer slammer. Back to Mike's point about the health risks and full understanding that there is often, especially with long-term health risks such as cancer, there's always a lot of confounding data, reports on both sides of the issue. I was doing some research on this, I wasn't able to get as into it as I wanted to, but I did see at least one peer-reviewed article linking the prevalence of cancer to turf fields. And there's also a lot of, of course, as you said, Mike, about you do need to clean the fields because there's a lot of blood and sweat that naturally occurs on a sports field, especially at the varsity level. And while naturally that would, on a grass field, that would be washed away just by another nature. It's less likely, it sticks around more and it's more of a, more of a concern there.
Based on what, Alex?
Based on the material of the turf, it's not ground up, not dirt.
It drains. It gets washed and cleansed and...
There is a study out, there's a study out, no, no, there's a study out of Connecticut that proves that saliva and blood, they last on that turf for under two minutes, I believe it was. I don't want to be exact, but look at, I'll forward a 20-page report out of Connecticut to Mike and he can be great.
My concern with this type of discussion, while perfectly valid, is I don't feel that we should be the arbiters of whether or not there is enough risk of cancer or anything else by the use of turf fields, that we're going to put a nail in a project in Littleton, Massachusetts. We have the PMBC, hold on, we have the PMBC, we have other boards that are involved in this, and we have the town. So that's why I'm trying to be careful about, I don't want to make a decision tonight to not build turf fields because I'm afraid my child or anybody else's child is going to be adversely affected from a safety point of view. I want the town to make that decision because they deserve the right to make that decision. And that's why the process is town meeting and general election. It allows all of us to participate in this type of discussion in multiple forums and ultimately to come together as a community and make a determination about cost benefits, specifically financial, but also safety, risk and other things like that. So that's why I'm just trying to strike that balance between supporting Article seven versus making a final determination as a board or a town that this is a good idea for our kids if it was, if it was free. If it was free, we might be, we very much might be having this discussion. Now, it's not free, so that's going to add a whole nother level of discussion, but I would still argue that that discussion has to happen beyond it. I think we should talk about it, I think we should raise it, but I wouldn't necessarily advocate making a final decision on those kinds of considerations.
I completely agree with you because I, I'm very skeptical of those things. I think that turf, like I said, I think turf fields are great, but having, having just seen that these things came out, I disagree with you that it's a non-issue because it's a question of whether or not our students are going to be playing on it.
Oh yeah. I don't think it's a non-issue. Well, I see what you're saying. You heard what I said, yeah.
Yeah, I...
That's fine, I, that's fine. If the rest of the town says it, I'm not going to say you guys are a bunch of idiots who made a huge mistake. I won't say that.
Right, that's not, right, that's not our place. But I don't think, I don't think it should be something that is brushed off. And I mean, it's, I don't have any knowledge of the type of thing and I'm skeptical of it. I've played on a million of the turf fields and I, you know, everything, like we've said, everything is a cause for concern, but I don't think it's a non-issue and...
And just, just, I mean, it's not a huge deal, but Nike grinds their heels and they use it for the synthetic turf. So if the town wanted to go a different route other than recycled tires, we're just going to use recycled sneakers.
Yeah, and that's not, I don't think it's a concern for us to come up with those design decisions. I'm sure that there are qualified people who can do it, but...
I definitely...
I think it's important to realize that there are many communities throughout the nation that have had these same discussions.
Right.
And you see a lot of turf fields going in. So I don't think anybody's discrediting the, the information. It is, and I'm sure you do, but I needed to say it, please realize that these debates have been going on for the last 15 years. So we're not, we're not just the only ones doing this and I think we need to take that into account as we, as we decide what direction we're taking.
I definitely see the perspective that Mike and Mike have on this. I guess...
It's like an ESPN show.
What's that?
It's like an ESPN show.
Right.
Mike and Mike.
Mike and Mike. And I definitely see that viewpoint, that those discussions will be had later on. I'm coming at it from a slightly different perspective, whereas to me, the, if, if we're wrong about these concerns, not if we're wrong, but if those studies are wrong and there is no link, then by postponing, for, for me, I, I haven't done, this is my first time hearing this presentation directly in front of the school committee, I still have more questions that I'm going to look at before I go to town meeting and vote. And my vote at town meeting will depend on, on between now and then, what I read and what I learn. My concern is that if those concerns are right, the worst-case scenario is students are more at risk for cancer. If they're wrong, the worst-case scenario is the field is taken out of service until we're able to find a remedy, which could be a season or more than a season, which is not an insignificant concern. But when we look at the different risks, from a, from a personal perspective, just personally speaking, I'm much more comfortable with one than the other. And that's where I think I will fall tonight. And that's not in any way in criticism of your viewpoints, just we all come from different walks of life with different perspectives on these issues. And I hope that I'm right long and by time it comes for town meeting because that means I'll have been thoroughly convinced enough the research will prove that my concern's wrong. But at this point, I'm not on there.
The only thing I'd like to add, that's a perfectly valid viewpoint, is that we're not strictly talking about the kids would miss the field for some period of time. Right now, it's not an ideal situation for them to play on.
As is.
As is, in terms of the quality of play that they get, but there is also a risk factor in terms of, you know, when it's that much dirt and stuff and they're digging out and playing, you know...
It creates a safety hazard.
Yeah, now, it's not as dramatic necessarily as some of the other things that we're considering relative to turf fields, but you can't...
It's a known inherent.
Exactly, you know, so I just think, we just need to keep that in mind, that, you know, there is a benefit to having a, a better, more even surface, whether or not it's ground up Nike shoes, tires that we know won't cause cancer or, you know, whatever else people come up with. And I'm sure in 20 years, it may be an entirely different technology, it's already a lot different than the one I grew up playing, the one I grew up playing on turf fields.
I was painted country.
Yeah, exactly. So, so, you know, so you're right, I mean, things can change and there's, you know, something to be said for waiting. On the other hand, you wait, you don't get the benefit either, so...
Right.
See, I'm comfortable that in the end, it's really going to be up to town meeting to decide whether or not this comes through. So what, I feel comfortable that our vote today would be lending our support to the use of the $100,000 because as a school committee, it would be wise for us to, if there is the benefit and when we, somebody, you know, clears our concerns, then that would be a wise, right, that would be up to town meetings, would be a wise decision.
Before we take a motion, is there any other discussion before we take a motion amongst ourselves?
The only point of clarification I wanted to put out there is that there was a discussion about field use and studies to be done on field use. Park and Rec does that all day, every day. I mean, they're constantly looking at that, reviewing that. The Park and Rec Commission takes a look at that, the whole Morgan property, the 300 King Street. So that's something, to your point, Mike, that's very much in the wheelhouse and it's not something that would end, you know, this is not an end-all. So it is a discussion that's...
This gets to a better hand.
KEDAS meeting every year with all of the youth boards and discusses, hey, you know, what, how many fields do you need, how many games do you anticipate? And there's a lot of planning, there's a lot that goes into it.
And having these fields, we give for a better hand to work with.
In theory, absolutely.
That is a benefit, yeah.
Yeah, there is a benefit to that. You know, it could be the classic, well, the more capacity you have, the more you'll use it and we'll be still having problems, but there'll be different problems. And again, the kids...
More people will be benefited.
Exactly, that's the way I look at it. Those are good problems to have. We've got some, too many kids that want to play too many sports, that's not really a problem, that's just an issue that has to be addressed and resolved to have the most, you know, the best and most positive impact on the greatest number of kids. So yeah, I mean, those are good discussions there. All right, anything else?
Just one last, one last thing. So I, I'm, especially based on what you just said there, Chuck, about, you know, Park and Rec is looking at the different things there, why wasn't the standard process of going to Park and Rec and getting this supported as a Park and Rec-sponsored article versus a citizen's petition? Why? It seems that we circumvented or shortcutted the process there by not, typically we see these being vetted through the relevant committees, boards, groups there.
You want my opinion or you want me to...
Well, no, it's more directed here because it went directly as a citizen's request on the ballot versus coming through what I would have thought would have been the...
But as did the track. As did the track.
I didn't, I wasn't on the board at that point to ask this question.
Same process. Would you like a response to that?
Yeah, so, I mean, they've been talking about turf fields, I think, eight years, so...
It is a process.
They've been talking about it for a while, to never come forward. And I said, what's the best way to get it on, to vote for it? And I was told to get a petition together and that's the best way we went about it. I mean, trust me, it probably wasn't the best way, but it's the best way.
It has been part of the discussion, as, I mean, they've been on the baseball board for, I think, seven years now and it's, it's, to Mike's point, turf fields are always discussed and where can we put them and it's always been bandied about. Right now, frankly, 300 King Street is a priority, so...
For Park and Rec.
For Park and Rec. So I, that's my opinion as to why that, you know, this, this, this process was kind of expedited the process and...
And it was similar with the track. I mean, I think that it was a group of citizens who, it wasn't like we never talked about the track as a capital project that needed to be attended to. It just was always, you know, on the list but never at the top of the list and finally people said, well, we want it at the top of our list and they went after it and they got it.
And they worked on it and, you know, to...
And well, in a lot of ways, they worked very well.
The LTO and hats off to Mike and then the other two people that helped him.
Whatever.
All right. Community input? Community input, come right up here?
Yeah.
Finally, someone whose name's not Mike.
I'm going to go to my own mic, great.
But we do that to not confuse you, Alex.
So Kirby, we know you because you're here.
Littleton, Mass.
Thank you, sir.
Just a quick question, the email I forwarded to you, Mike, has it been shared with the rest of the committee?
Not yet, it will go out, you know, it's information that, you're not the first person that's raised that information, so it'll go out and, I mean, he's already seen some of the studies, Chuck's already seen some of the studies, so I know that people have seen it, so I didn't shove that particular one out.
Right.
Because I know it's already been, it's an issue that's been raised, so...
And in light of time and as your comments have been focused on, you're more interested in not discussing health issues, I can understand that. But I would respectfully state that it is the elephant in the room that people haven't talked about, safety hazards and issues, and I'll specify some of the ones I'm familiar with. I was in the healthcare industry, I drove an ambulance, I'm certainly in it now, I'm a carpenter, I have to deal with houses that have lead paint in them, so I have to deal with process and procedure. So I have some background that's there. Particularly, you've been talking about the fill between the artificial turf. Yes, the Nike does have a new grindout that doesn't get you the tires and there's less carcinogens, if any. There is a CDC report out from New Jersey about what's the long-term effect of the artificial turf itself and the colorants associated with them and the lead content associated with them, the dust that gets created as the things get worn down, the dust, lead dust that gets taken away as part of groundwater. There are other items with regards to carcinogens and impact along this line. I'm not going to get into them because I'm not a healthcare professional, but as a school committee and a representative back to the PMBC, there needs to be some sort of a qualification or vetting process that says, if we're going to buy this product, we know what it's going to do to the school from an economic perspective as well as a healthcare perspective. And that's the only thing I'm kind of missing in this whole process in that if it's been six or seven years that we've been trying to make this happen, then why haven't we had a public forum that brings out some of these concerns in a pro and a con fashion and have the manufacturers come in and talk about, well, okay, this is what we use for colorant or don't use for colorant, this is what we're seeing or not seeing, this is what the fill we plan to use, or this is the fill that we would recommend using because it has limited health benefits and or health issues. So that's, that's kind of what I'm getting at is, you can have, you know, you don't want to disagree about having turf fields and I'm surely not against having safer fields and having better usage and having some revenue that comes in and takes care of maintenance, but I don't think we've done the base homework here, folks, to understand, you know, we tell our kids, we task them, what's your primary research here on this whole turf thing? We just make an assumption that it's good because we've been told. Now, I'm not saying yes and I'm not saying no, I'm just raising the point that before we start saying, we're going to allocate funds for design and this is to the town, that we need to understand what it is we're buying into. That's all I was going to say, I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Kirby. All right. We don't have any other retreason sentiments.
Rebuttal, Mike? The only thing I'll say is, kind of following up on Kelly's point, I mean, MIT's got turf fields, Harvard's put in turf fields, they have, they have some pretty good researchers there, and they've done a lot of research.
Let's go talk some.
Absolutely, I mean, that's, that's something that we can absolutely do. We don't even know if we're going to do it.
I know, but.
So we're just, we're just here to say, yeah, you can use our property to do it on, ask the townspeople, you know, we're okay with you doing that, go and ask townspeople. So, and I totally get that, in, in, those forums do happen, Kirby? Further down the process.
I hope so.
I'm certain of it.
They do. When the design gets going, I don't, I mean, I don't want to take you all night here, but when the diet, design does get going, people from turf companies come out, present what they have, their offer, and they give a whole presentation. On the flip side of that, you're going, just so everyone knows, when those turf companies come out, you get the turf company, right? So everyone will say, well, that's presented by the turf company. So there's, like everyone has said, you can read all kinds of studies, University of Penn State, the study out of Connecticut that I'll send the chair, he can distribute it how he wants. It's, it's pros and cons all the way around.
It's been allowing the public to know what the issues are and letting them make the decision.
Facebook's doing that, sorry.
It'll definitely happen.
I guess it's really not, really not a school committee issue.
It's not.
I mean, it's part of, it should be part of our process, but I don't think it's the be-all and end-all of tonight's discussion, you know, and it'll definitely be, there's no question that it'll be a significant part of the debate, there's no question. Whether, whether any of us want it to be or not, it will be.
Right.
And rightfully so, along with any number of other aspects, financial and safety and other.
And what with the track, certainly opponents of the track as well.
So I think we would agree, or at least from my perspective, it's an issue that the school committee should be concerned with, but it's not a, we're not the final arbiter, so it's ultimate.
All set. All right, do we entertain a motion?
So we, we've agreed that if we make a motion to support Article 7, that it's, it's fine personally, that her agreeing that it's okay to.
Why don't you make your motion and we'll figure it out.
Can I chime in there before you do?
Sure.
I would vote, at this stage, I'm not in favor of the school committee approving, of recommending Article 7, but I am in favor of us, if we do look forward to the project, of us lending our, our property to that.
So I guess we can make it to motion.
All right, I move that the school committee allow the use or conversion of our high school and alumni field, fields for the purposes of turf fields. See, if you pre-authored that, I wouldn't have stumbled.
See, the benefits are already proven themselves.
Second.
Okay, motion's in, seconded. So just to make sure that I have clarification, so we're going to get, you're going to make another motion relative to Article 7.
Correct.
This is specifically to address Alex's issue of, you know, if turf fields were agreed upon by the town via town meeting and ballot, that as a, as a school committee, we would accept an upgraded, what we would consider typically an upgraded facility.
We would agree.
Subject, subject to the town meeting authorization.
Well, that's implied, because there's no other way to get it, so.
Can we have Bettina to read that, just so?
Motion by Chuck Decote to use the high school and alumni fields as turf field if, if that is, if that has been approved by the town.
Subject to the town meeting authorization.
Subject, yeah. Subject to town meeting approval.
Subject to town meeting, okay.
Approval, yeah.
Yep.
All right, the motion's in, seconded discussion. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion as read?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Thanks, Chuck. I can't have stumbled over that, so, better you than me.
All right, I move that the school committee support Article 7 for use of CPA funds for the turf field initiative proposed by the turf field committee. Should the project move forward, school committee park and represent, Park and Rec representative would like to be involved in the design project, design of the project.
Seconded. Seconded, thank you. Any further discussion?
I'd recommend splitting that sec, that last part there, because whether we support Article 7 or not, if the project proceeds forward, we want representation with Park and Rec on that. No, so I mean.
I think you're right, I think you're right. My point would be, I don't even think we need it in there.
Right.
We're going to be involved.
We already have a PMBC.
Exactly, we're going to be involved.
We have a Park and Rec.
Yeah, we have Park and Rec and we have a PMBC.
I'm not sure that that's necessary.
So they can't exclude us, yeah.
I'll amend, I'll amend the motion to say, move the school committee support Article 7 for use of CPA funds for the turf field initiative proposed by the turf field committee. Period.
Seconded again.
Remanded motion has been seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion as read, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Aye.
No.
No, three, two.
Three, two. All right, thank you, thank you, Mike. Appreciate you running there after the football game. At least it's not raining in here.
You off to work now?
No. No, I guess this is a night off for me.
The upside is, the upside is, if it was a win, we might not have seen you, we might have been at chip shots.
What's that?
I said, the upside is, if it was a win, we might not have seen you, you might have been at chip shots.
If I didn't run into him, you wouldn't have seen me.
All right, superintendent's report.
Nice, thank you.
Thanks, Mike. District determine measures.
Jerry Lynn is not here this evening, she's under the weather, so to speak. I just wanted to let you know that we're, we're moving ahead with DDM development. Pretests have been given, we've had a lot of conversation, good conversation, but difficult conversation about how do we, how do we determine benchmarks? There's such a myriad of test design, and, and we're not even going to get into reliability and validity, because it really doesn't have part of the discussion in terms of locally-developed assessments. So we're coming to the conclusion, as we, we're moving forward, and we're, we're cutting new ground on this, there's nobody out there that really has done it, so we're, we're trying to, to set the scene. We're, we're looking at, instead of succinct benchmarks, we're looking at growth bands. And now we're trying to figure out whether we can make those consistent, or whether they should be subject-specific, et cetera. So it's going to take us a while to, to work through this. It's very complicated, and if you were committed to quantitative analysis, you'd go nuts. And as some of you know, most of my education's been in quantitative universities, so it's, it's interesting. And my concern, or, or passion, motive is, is whatever we do, it needs to be beneficial to the students in the classroom. So I'm not as hung up about growth bands as I am using good information to determine what our students need to be successful, and that's how I'm handling it as a superintendent. As you can well imagine, teachers are looking at this with a certain degree of trepidation, and rightly so, because it may not directly affect employment, but it can affect the type of, of plan that they're on, evaluation plan that they're on. So it's, it's going well, but it's not going to happen quickly, I'll put it that way. And we, we are in year one, so at the end of year one, we're going to have to have some measures, because at the end of next year, the second year, we're going to have to make those judgment calls as part of the evaluative process. So that's the update to this point in time. We've had lots of meetings, we pulled in Teachers 21 to also give us some expertise as well, so things are going well. So I just wanted to report out on that, because it is a topic of discussion wherever you go.
All right, thank you.
Second item, we had a great meeting with local realtors a couple of weeks ago, and I'd like to thank Knox Realty for coming to the plate to help us out, and they helped organize getting the realtors to us and brought some food and beverages, and we had over 20 people come to our meeting. It gave us an opportunity to showcase our schools, district, and we had some great conversations. And the realtors weren't just local realtors, they, they also represent the surrounding communities, so it was kind of nice to, to have that opportunity. Again, as part of, part of a communication plan that we have at, at the district level to ensure that we're reaching out and developing partnerships. So it was a time well spent, so to speak. Financial report, every month, as protocol, we deliver a financial report to you, our cost centers, it was in there, I'm sure you've had a chance to look at it early in the year, so there certainly isn't anything that, that stands out at this point in time. Steve, I don't think you have anything else to add to that, do you?
Nope, no surprises yet.
Okay. Anybody have any questions on that?
I don't think, I'm going back to the realtor, realtor thing, I just, Kelly, I think it's awesome that you worked with Knox Realty and all the realtors to basically meet our goal. You know, we've committed to communicating with the community, and what a great outreach to speak with realtors, or, you know, talking to young families that are coming and looking for a good school system, or talking to anybody that's looking to come into a community that has assets, and we truly are.
Protect the value of your home.
Exactly, and I think that's, I love the initiative, and appreciate you doing exactly what you did, I think it's awesome.
Thank you, appreciate you.
Thank you.
We have drafted a capital request plan for you to look at this evening. If you recall, at the last joint meeting we had with the Board of Selectmen, they seemed to be wanting things earlier, year to year, and this is one such item. We did not even begin to take the liberty to recommend how we would prioritize these items. There's too much missing at this point in time, and I'm going to go back to a conversation that we had. It's really difficult to start setting a list of priorities when we're not sure what the town capital replacement plan is going to do, because their decisions will impact our decisions as a school department, I don't know if that makes sense. Okay. So when we, it would be very helpful if we could have a list from the PMBC in terms of, this is our second year, these are the things we're going to, to pay attention to. I did have Steve, however, go through the capital plan for all of the schools, and take a look at things that we would raise flags to. Now, PMBC may have different ideas, and that's great, but my concern was, if, if we don't have to do something, for example, one of our schools recommended we replaced all the rugs, well, they're not ready to be replaced yet, so that means we've taken great care of them. So we could probably get another four or five years out of it, so there's no sense spending $150,000 on rugs if, if we don't have to. So for us, that was a non, non-item. So we've gone through that report, and it's, it's helped us create the list that we have before you this evening. So I don't know what you would like to do, we, we have to submit this at the end of October, because it doesn't have priority lists at all, I, I don't see any harm in doing that at that point in time.
So you're, what you're suggesting is, we submit the list as-is with no prioritization on it, fully expecting that we will add priority down the road, or conceivably add or remove items on the list, depending on.
Correct.
How, you know, conditions on the ground change as we go forward.
Okay, right.
I just have a, just a question. So, and it relates to the, the facility report that we, we got, so you just made an interesting observation, our report, our, our rugs are slated for replacement by that plan now, and you're recommending that that be maybe three or four years from now.
Right.
So is somebody going to go back to that report and change the, move it over to FY20 or something, so that it doesn't fall off the plan? But I'm, I'm just concerned about, and maybe that's something, Alex, you may need to go back with PMBC on.
I think that's a PMBC.
But in terms of how we are going to recalendarize some of these decisions, because.
It's a great question. I, the way I remember that, that document being presented to us was that it had the capacity for just that.
Correct.
Among other things.
Correct, it does.
You can change and move, and then the whole thing cascades its way down, and.
It's going to trip into my next one there, is there's also many items on it that are past its end of life, but not calendarized for replacement. And just the one you mentioned, Steve, in, in a passing email, is the bleachers. According to that report, they're beyond end of life, but nowhere in the 10-year plan is $200,000 allocated or $300,000 allocated for repair or replacement. So it's, it's a missing, it's a, I don't know how many other gaps like that are in that report there. And I'm not saying that we proactively change something there, but there's $200,000 missing out of the 10-year capital plan right there with that approach.
Darrell, having, having done this many times in my career, having plans like this, and having opportunities to go into a software program and, and change things around, you'll find that, that that's typical, since we've never done this before, and it's going to take a while for us to get up to speed. The, the uncertainty now, though, is, is because we have two parties involved, and, and I'm not opposed to that, it's just that it would be helpful for us if we had that information in a more timely manner, then, then we know what we need to do to try to take care of as much as possible with combined efforts. And I really don't, I want to be cautious and not try to set the tone for the other party, because we still have other things we're dealing with that don't fall within that plan, just general maintenance. So I, I think that's where we're at now. I, I agree wholeheartedly with you, but at, at the same time, there, there are going to be things that, that are going to have to be off the plan, so to speak, for a while. All we can do is, is, is watch them, get people in that are qualified to, to look at these structures, and help us make good, good decisions as we move forward.
No, I, I, I fully understand, it's, it's just that, as, my concern becomes more in terms of how the town may be using the composite out of that there, of which there's things that I'm not sure when they, you know, as I look at the, you know, I look at that plan, and then I look at the spreadsheets that get produced, I don't know if, if those things that are already past end of life have been planned sometime in the future for replace, you know, for the cost associated. Not necessarily that we would proactively replace them, but as a reminder, there's another chunk of money that's going to be spent that's not in a 10-year, in, in that plan, that base plan. I guess maybe that's something that Alex might need to work as the interface to the PMBC a little bit more there. It's, and it, and it's no, it's not critiquing what's in this plan here.
Right.
It's just more of, I think there's a lot of other numbers that are, that are, that are missing.
I agree. Yes, most definitely.
You know, because I think, and that's where my, you know, concern comes. It's, it's not necessarily on the, you know, you know, what, you know, when have these been specifically, you know, slated to, to get handled.
And if I may, Darrell, vice versa as well, because there are items on that capital list that are possibly approaching end of life, but because, for instance, some of our rooftop units, because we do have a maintenance plan with their service four times a year, they're, they're really checked on a daily basis, they might be in better shape than what that plan calls for, and so there needs to be some interaction with PMBC on that as well.
And when this document came about, and when the project came about, we agreed that through PMBC and with the firm we use that, that built this.
EMG.
EMG, we wanted to make sure that we can edit it throughout the process, because it's green print in some ways.
I like that word.
I know. So I guess, I remember that there was a discussion when we first started using this tool about which department heads would have access to change it. I forget where we landed on how the schools would be able to maintain it, in terms of what our equipment was in the townwide facility study, to make sure that this information is up to date. For instance, if something, if we find that something has four years more expected, life expectancy than was expected when it was entered by EMG or when it was built, how do we, how do we account for that? And how do we make sure that just because it hits zero here and we're not choosing to replace it, how do we make sure that it doesn't fall off the radar four years from now when it does in fact need replacing? So do either of you know if anyone in the school department did get access to editing that report, or if we're not there yet?
I have access to the report, but.
Not to the editing.
I'm not editing yet at this point in time, I think we still need to work out some, some details with PMBC on that.
Okay, that's good to know. Because ideally, we can get to a place where we don't go to PMBC every time we find that, oh, we can get two more years out of our rugs, or, you know, I think it would be good to communicate that to them, you know, whenever we make a change, just to say, hey, so you know, we're making this change, but to also be able to do it ourselves without having to go between multiple bodies.
Personally, I would feel very uncomfortable changing information in that database without coming and discussing with PMBC at this point in time.
Since, since we are in a, a different venture with PMBC, I would, I would like to request that you consider involving staff, our staff, a little more regularly, so that we can have that, those conversations and communication. We don't want to step on anybody's toes, but if, if Steve attends a few meetings, or I attend a few meetings, we can, we can give them our, our take on, on what's happening with that report.
I think that would be very beneficial, both with.
I think that addresses a lot of concerns you had, in terms of making sure it's a dynamic process that, you know.
Right.
Things don't just get lost off. things don't just get lost off.
Because the last thing we want is somebody misinterpreting this spreadsheet also that says the school committee is asking for $750,000. Just simply because that's the top bottom line on that spreadsheet there. It's more of a process and a dialogue.
It is important to know, and I'm sure you do, and I'm going to say it anyway, is that because we haven't had a plan like this for many years in our schools, I mean, they're not real old, but they're old enough where things are starting to build, that we're going to face surprises from year to year that are not predictable. As we budget, we need to really keep that up the...
I think the whole goal of these kinds of efforts is to minimize them. You're never going to eliminate, but you're trying to minimize the number of surprises. So, that's a goal.
It can also help in long-term planning as well, which is obviously one of the big indices for this study having been done. And being able to include those things like bleachers or anything else that might be missing. As Kelly said, there will be some growing pains as we and all the other kind of departments adjust to this. And I think including staff more readily will help the boards handle that because it's not what we do full-time. Will help in long-term planning. I was just, I joked to Mike just now, but I think it actually is interesting. I would guess that the bleachers would follow their active recreational use. And obviously, I said that sort of in a flip fashion, but also because from a long-term planning perspective, when those funds do become available, whether it's through a 40B project or some other, whatever the funds, the source of the funding might be, for us to be able to look and say, okay, well, here's what the funding can be used for. Do we have any projects outstanding that can be funded to pay for in that way? We weren't set up to do that with the 40B when that came around. Hopefully, in the future, if there are any other source, irregular sources of funding in that way, we'd be able to finesse that a little better.
So, capital...
Right, so in terms of, thank you, we're going to circle back to that. In terms of the draft capital request, so I think that, are we okay with authorizing the administration to give this list to the town as the first step in a process of approving the capital request for the next fiscal year? You all good with that?
I'm good.
Would be presented in draft form?
Yeah, clearly marked in draft form, preliminary, however, any other adjectives you want to use to make sure it clears that we are still...
Correct. Are there any questions about any items on this I can answer at this point in time or?
Darryl?
No, I might want to, I'll send you an email on it. It would just be necessary.
The energy program stuff on there, the ROI, you know. Right, there's a little bit of everything on there. There's some facilities technology, there's an educational enhancement to the high school, there's some energy initiative savings that have return on investment information. We can provide more information. That actually came out of Dave Riley's energy summary that he gave a couple of weeks ago, a couple of sessions ago, I should say. So, there's a little bit of everything on here, so I just want to be clear.
Yeah, I'm sure we'll get into the gory details as we get down the line.
Let's jump in real quick. Couple of meetings ago, we had mentioned the lack of storage. We were talking about Rita's plan and, you know, that some of the rooms were being used, there's storage and classrooms and that kind of thing. It came up about the lack of sufficient storage within our buildings. You know, some of our buildings are older and just didn't have the kind of space that we need today. With the building of, for instance, the wrestling shed at Russell Street School, wrestling now is doing something over at Shaker Lane. Is that a facility that we could in fact use for some storage?
Yeah, so if I can give you an update. So, we are, the school department is putting a shed at Shaker Lane, and basically, we're going to do a swap with the wrestling program. So, they're going to give us their shed at Russell Street that we can use for storage. But we'll take storage, we'll take items out of the school and out of storage closets and make that more available for in-building storage use. And the shed is going to Shaker Lane that was authorized by school committee last year. So, that shed...
Wasn't authorized that we would give them a shed. It was authorized that they could put a shed at Shaker Lane.
It was authorized that we would put it there, correct.
So, they could put the shed there.
Correct.
They could put a shed next to the pump house.
Correct.
Okay, but they could put the shed next to it.
Not that we were doing it.
Not that we were giving them a shed or buying them a shed or building them a shed.
Correct, I'm not...
So, if they're vacating the shed that's at Russell Street, thank you. Right? It's on our property.
Correct, it's on our property.
It's our shed. Okay, so what do you want me to say? Something happens to their shed, who's responsible, right?
Right, so...
So, we accepted it.
Yes.
Am I correct? Two years ago, I believe?
Yes.
True.
All right, so they vacated it. We accepted it as a gift.
Yes.
As we had to. It was on our property. They decided they didn't want to do it at Russell Street anymore. They vacated it. We approved for them to put something else, and they were going to do a storage container or a pond or something in the interim until they figured out what they were going to do over there. We're not paying for them to put a, we're not paying for a shed to go at Shaker Lane.
Yes, I am, I...
Yes.
Yes, we are... The school department is building a shed to go at Shaker Lane, and we are swapping the storage shed so they are giving, it was either, the wrestling program was either going to try to move theirs and take it over and put it over there.
It's not theirs, they gifted it to us.
Okay, well, technically, you know, I'm not going to get it, I'm not, what do you want me to say? It was a wrestling program shed. It was a wrestling program shed. It was accepted by the school department for the use of the wrestling program.
But we had to accept it, Steve, in order for it to be placed on our property.
Correct.
Talking about the wrestling shed being at Russell Street School. They vacated it. They said they wanted, they were going to put a pond or something over at Shaker Lane next to the pump house. And correcting if I'm wrong, Steve just informed us that we are paying to put a shed at Shaker Lane in exchange for the use of the shed that we already received as a gift at Russell Street.
Okay.
When we had that discussion, and I don't believe I was on the board when the Russell Street shed was gifted to us, but I was, I do recall the discussion at Shaker Lane. And I would have to go back and look, but I remember, I thought, I remember the wrestling group saying they would be the ones building the shed. We were given the permission to build in that space there, but I thought we, the discussion was that they were the ones building it, doing the actual funding.
But that doesn't mean they own it.
Right. And they also, because I brought it up, I may recall. I think it was the only vote that wasn't in favor of that shed going next to the pump house. It was something that I didn't feel as though that was a good spot. Jim Fattig told me in the past that it was a problem for him plowing. I guess that got resolved. It was a problem for baseball and softball games because that, there's not a whole lot of parking down there. People park right where that shed went this year, the container went this year. This is news that we're paying for a shed for a youth organization to use on our property. But... They fully understood that they were going to have to pay to put another shed or a pond or something.
The shed at Russell Street, they built and paid for.
I understand. But they vacated. They said it's not going to work for us anymore. I pushed back on them. I said, this is the, these are the reasons that we went to Russell Street. They pushed back saying that it's just not working out because by the time, we can't get kids in there to stretch and whatnot because of Tiger's Den. So, there was some discussion back and forth about that. But never did we agree to pay for a shed for their use at Shaker Lane. They were going to put a shed or a container or a pond or something next to the pump house at their expense.
The school department needs additional shed for storage for snow blowers and gas and things that were currently storing the building that we are not allowed to store in the building.
Which is why I just brought this up.
So, we have to get those out of the building. So, I thought this was the best way to deal with getting things out of the building. I either go up and buy a shed for the school department and put it someplace.
We have a shed, the Russell Street shed. The Russell Street shed.
For the wrestling program.
That the wrestling program built and vacated.
Okay, then school committee gave me direction, what do you want me to do?
I don't want us paying for wrestling's shed. I definitely don't want that. If that's the case, I want to put a request in for baseball to get a shed. I mean, I'm being smart, Alex, but I just, I don't want to see a policy where we're paying for youth organizations or any organization.
It's clear to me that Steve misinterpreted, let me finish, please. Steve misinterpreted the intent of the school committee. As far as I'm concerned, superintendent, the school committee does not desire to pay for that shed, so we shouldn't be paying for the shed.
That's my opinion. I just, I don't agree that we should...
I mean, I guess the question is, is if it's a shed that is being used solely for any youth organization, we would never expect to pay for it. If it is a shed that is being used solely for school department purposes, we would fully expect to pay for the shed. If it is a shed is being used for hybrid use, then I think we need to come up with a determination of what our share of the cost is versus outside party share of the cost. Or we pay for the whole thing and then lease a portion of it back as needed until they vacate for other reasons. You know, there's other ways of addressing this, but I clearly, I think you're absolutely right. Nobody should be getting a free use of, because there are plenty of other organizations that have asked for use of space that we have denied for appropriate reasons. And if we had allowed it, I think we clearly would have thought about the cost of...
Nobody's getting free use of a shed, we're doing a shed swap.
But it's not a swap. You can't hang your hat on that one because Chuck's right. They put that in there on their own dime on their assumption that they were going to get to use it. If they don't get to use it, that's not our problem, that's their problem. Now, basically, they need to...
They chose not to use it.
Right, they need a new shed, they got to pay for a new shed. I mean, basically, what you're asking is for us to give them a quid pro quo. We get that, we pay for this, we get that in return. That's up to us to decide if we think that's sufficient, which is fine. We could debate that and make a determination on that, but that has to be our determination.
I agree.
And right now, it's our shed. There's one shed at Russell Street, which is ours.
Well, that's kind of, I think Chuck's point is that we have a position of leverage.
We had to receive that. Definitely dealing from a position of strength.
Just to go back, so I'm understanding the whole conversation. Didn't we not, at the school committee level, say that they could move that shed to Shaker Lane?
I don't recall that. I don't recall that. I'd have to go back and look.
That's what I have in my mind, doesn't mean that that's what we decided. That's what I left with.
Okay.
I think it came up in the conversation, they could move it, and I think...
So, the wrestling program either moves that shed to Shaker Lane and the school department provides for Russell Street for storage or...
Or not, if we can come up with other solutions. I mean, again, that is a determination.
Before we make black and white decisions, Steve, I want to go back and find out. I mean, I don't recall us saying, you can move that shed. Well, I mean, there was some excavation done, and we accepted that shed. We had to, for liability reasons and everything. I mean, I believe you brought that up, that we had to accept it as a gift. Just like the ticket booth was donated by Rotary and LIBS. They don't belong to Rotary and LIBS, but they were paid for by Rotary and LIBS. Therefore, they had to be gifted to the school because they're on school property.
So, I think the first thing that needs to be done then is to go back into the minutes and find when we had that conversation and see how it was captured. I think that's the first step.
Okay.
I don't have anything against wrestling, but I don't want, I definitely don't want to be paying for a shed for them. And I don't think that's fair.
So, Mr. Chairman.
I agree with you, Kelly, let's go, let's do some research on this. Let's figure out exactly where the current shed stands in terms of ownership and everything else. And then if you could then, once we know the answers to that question, if we could just get a formal presentation on what you would suggest as an administration that you would like to see happen that addresses our needs. And if you think that there's an opportunity for some efficiencies, cost savings, benefit to civilly parties, please present them, and we'll make a determination if we accept that or not. Is that reasonable? Okay?
Sounds good.
I will say, we do have, there's been a lot of work done to the garage inside of the track property, and there's a fair amount of space, there's a whole garage space in there that for snow blowers and that kind of thing, I think, might be a better use than the, I know it's in the wash, the janitor's room right now just inside that door, right? The snow blower and the gas and stuff like that, which fire department isn't really crazy about having in there. I think that might be, it's a garage, it's an outside storage area. I don't know, maybe, maybe Mike doesn't want it in there because it's his mats wound up smelling like gas. I don't know. But I think that might be a better option on the short term until we figure out whether or not we can use our shed outside of Russell Street. Do we have a key to that shed? Are we able to get in and out of that shed?
Somebody can.
No, can the school department? We have a key to get into the shed that the wrestling group built.
That the wrestling program built?
Yes.
I can't definitively answer that.
Absolutely unacceptable. We have to have a key to that. We do, it's on our property. I mean, even if wrestling was still using it, we need to have a key to that because...
We might never key, I don't know the incidence of the huge liability issue.
Yeah.
Let's see if we can make, get that cleared up. If we don't, let's get one.
Okay.
I did find, I did go back and find, do you want to postpone the discussion until later or do you want me to share what I found about what we could discuss?
I mean, it wasn't determined to...
I would prefer that we do it with the other things that we asked for in terms of coming up with a proposal relative to all the needs in each of the rooms. So, I appreciate you looking at that, but...
No problem.
Let's do it like that. Yeah, exactly, why don't you do that so nobody else did, did twice.
Last item on my superintendent's report that I thought was going to be really short. To be otherwise.
Sorry, actually, I blame Darryl for bringing up the whole PMBC replacement plan thing. That's where we went down.
Yeah, that caused us.
No candies either, my goodness. Our last item, LCTV update. We've been working with LCTV to include them in our communication plan. What we've come up with at this point in time, and it's similar to what Darryl's talking about, but a different venue, is we're going to showcase our schools, I'm not sure how many times a year, at least four, and we're going to start with Shaker Lane. I don't know if Rich remembers that, but...
I do, I absolutely do.
It is after now.
And what we're going to do is, we want to make this worthwhile and student-centered. So, having Chuck and I be the eye of the tiger would be fun, but we're not probably showcasing students enough. And we may do that still for certain things, so...
I think Kirby has a say in this.
Kirby was good, Kirby was amiable. So, we're going to film what's happening in each of the schools. We're going to start with Shaker Lane, film some things that are happening. And then we're going to get together and the principal and myself will go to the TV studio. We'll show the segment, then we'll talk about it. So, that's what we're going to try this year to broaden our communication bandwidth, so to speak.
Awesome.
Yeah, looking forward to it. Can I just ask that, I know we have policies in place relative to the use of student images, and we, I don't know, opt-outs and all that kind of thing.
Yes, yes.
We'll just be cognizant that we're addressing those. I would expect that the only thing you're going to show is us in our best shining light anyway.
Of course, but...
School lines for the kids' faces.
Rich has already asked me if he gets an expense account for war goofs.
It was already written in my contract.
You already have the nicest eyeglasses anybody in this room.
That's only because my wife stepped on my other one. By accident or?
That brings me to the end of my report.
All right, thank you. Interested citizens?
We lost three. I thought we were pretty interesting.
Subcommittee reports, PMBC?
Nothing new to report besides conversations we've already had.
Okay, yeah, which, thank you, good, we've had enough. Budget Subcommittee, I was out sick of our first meeting that we had a lot of two days ago. Do any of you guys want to talk about that we went over or?
We're in preliminary stages. Needs, what the cost of level services might be at this stage, plus any pressing needs. You know, very, very preliminary, not ready to share any numbers because they're all subject to change.
We started looking at some basic numbers and also went over that second draft of the budget format that you've already seen, and we'll be bringing it back to our next meeting.
Good, all right, excellent. Policy Subcommittee?
Kelly and I met this week. We'll be bringing all of the E policies, I think, at the next meeting. So, I'd like to try to, for the two meetings in November, knock off all of the financial policies.
So, are you fine with putting them on the next meeting when Alex Meyer is going to be away or?
Are you guys fine with that?
I'm fine.
I mean, I think, I think really what it would be is if it's accepting or deleting obvious, you know, things like that. If there are ones you think that we really need to have a robust discussion of, we will hold off until you guys get back on that. But if it's housekeeping, we'll...
Most of it is first reading.
Yeah, it'll be first reading. And I'll get the packet out probably to everybody, so you'll have an extra week to...
Yeah, when I look over the packet, I'll chime in. Yeah. When I look over the packet, I'll chime in if I say I want to be here for this housekeeping. I don't need to practice my enunciation of certain vowels when we get the policy motions.
All right. That sounds good. Do we need an executive session tonight?
No, we don't.
Okay. Does anybody have any other business that we want to discuss?
Alex, you are going to the conference?
Yes, I am. I was not able to, I was unable to make a head of work commitment.
We all got a copy of the packet and the...
Yeah.
Anybody have anything to discuss about that in preparation? Just letting you know if we have anything. Sorry.
No, no, that's fine. Didn't hear anything else?
Well, they just reminded me of something. I don't think, I haven't seen any of the recommended motions.
I haven't. I think through discussion topics, but I didn't see recommended motions as such.
So, I'll have Dorothy phone and see if they can't send us a copy so I can send them off.
And, you all can chime in with your feedback to me. If we can't deliberate, but you can give me your thoughts.
Good deal.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion in second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you, everybody. See you in two weeks.